We're going to ask everybody on the dais to introduce themselves.
Detective Rachel Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We want to welcome everybody. We start every meeting with prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us in silent prayer. Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, we have a special presentation. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a proclamation recognizing Cincinnati Music and Arts Program. This is a, actually, this idea of Inspire came to me in the middle of the night, that there were groups that were out in the community who were trying to do great things and maybe lacked a little bit of money to move forward. So it was really to give hope to the mentors, coaches, instructors, and also to give hope to the young people that were involved, that we care about you. We love you and we want you to move forward in a positive way. So I thought since this is our last meeting for the, before the new year, it would be great to let the ones that are watching know just one of the examples of the Inspire program. And so that's why we're having a proclamation today to recognize this group. And I'll say a little more later. But I have a proclamation here, and it's a proclamation recognizing Cincinnati Music and Arts Program. Whereas the Cincinnati Music and Arts Program, CMAP, was founded in February 2009 by Eric McDaniel Senior. And whereas intent behind the creation of the program was to restore musical education within the students at Cincinnati Public Schools, as well as deliver at-risk students with a haven to express safety. And...
Whereas, CMAP extends the reach of the arts to communities that have been traditionally underserved, yet riddled with crime dysfunction and despair. And whereas, students can increase their self-esteem, community pride, as well as their desire to exceed their current surroundings.
Whereas with each note that is taught and every routine that is rehearsed, students are instilled with discipline and desire. Whereas CMAP is truly the embodiment of No Child Left Behind, because each and every student is set forth with the skills and support to reach for the stars and beyond.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners congratulates Cincinnati Music and Arts Program and was proud to support them with the purchase of instruments through our Inspire initiative and thanks them for their contribution to the citizens of Hamilton County, Ohio. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, thus hereby proclaim Friday, December 14th, 2023, as Cincinnati Music and Arts Program Day in all of Hamilton County, and it's signed by all our commissioners. And when we say in all of Hamilton County, we're talking about approximately 826,000 people in Hamilton County. So wherever you are today, you can let people know, this is my day today. So, and we... And we have their fearless leader is here to speak for a minute. Would you like to come forward to the podium?
As he comes, come forward, but we open up for the commissioners. So you said you had more to say?
No, go on.
Okay. Vice President Dreehouse?
Well, I just want to thank you all for being here. I can't, I'm sure you're going to play something, so that's what I'm really looking, no offense, that's what I'm really looking forward to. But thank you for being here. We were happy to help in a small way to make sure that you have the equipment that you need, the instruments you need to be the, all that you are inspiring this community. So thanks for your work.
Thank you so much. We, this is the Music and Arts Program. We definitely thank you all for allowing us to come here and receive this award, this proclamation. We really appreciate it. And with the instruments or with the grant that you actually provided for us, we bought instruments for like the trumpets. Hold up a couple of trumpets, right? Trumpets, then we got some melophones, hold up. This is actually one of them, I think you have the other one. And then we actually got some trombones as well. So we definitely appreciate you all for allowing us to purchase the instruments, because yes, we actually used them for an event, Thanksgiving, where the young lady in the West End, and a few of them was, has succumbed to a drive-by shooting. Well, one of them actually died, the four-year-old, the fourth grader, but the 10th grader, she survived. So we was able to take her the basket and we actually did a parade through the West End. And the news was there and it was great for the community to come out. As we were playing, they was like, what's going on? What are y'all playing for? And we was actually able to tell them that we playing because our life was just saved, you know, and we appreciate that, you know. So again, we just like to thank you all and allow us to continue to be a voice in the community. And we always say that where there's darkness, you always do need some light. Okay, so thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Before you play, before you play, real quick, just wanted to say, I want to also commend Commissioner Dumas and was happy to support this initiative. And I come from Grambling State University, one of the world-famed marching bands. So I'm interested in having more of our young people be able to, like you all, I want to see y'all on the field, in the colleges around the country and getting those scholarships. So just wanted to say that this is an opportunity, a pipeline for folks to get scholarships as well, so.
Definitely. And just FYI, we do have a couple of students that have been accepted already into Jackson State University, Alabama A&amp;M, Tuskegee. I got my son who went to Alabama State, and I got another son at Southern University. So we definitely are sending him to college.
Yeah, that's why Jackson State's so great.
In that way.
They giving us the blues right now. Oh, Commissioner Dumas, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna say, one, this is exactly what the purpose of the initiative is. And also to let everybody know who's listening that my colleagues have approved the initiative for, well, not yet, we got to vote on it today, for next year, that the Inspire grant will be started.
Thank you so much. We'll just play one song that we've come accustomed to, and hopefully you all will be able to appreciate as much as we do.
To Big Dumas. "I Give Myself Away, So You Can Use Me." And that's exactly why I'm up here. And then, when you played it, it's not by accident, and it was absolutely beautiful. And I would, I have to introduce Alice Bledsoe, who is the program coordinator of the Inspire initiative. Would you like to say a few words?
Um, I would just like to say, you know, this is why I do what I do. And I thank you commissioners, because, I told someone the other day, I believe that our commissioners really care about the community. But this is why I do what I do. Great job, great job. Keep doing great things, and you'll have a fantastic year.
Yes.
So we're gonna come down and present your proclamation and take a photo with you all.
We're just gonna do it the opposite way. If you guys stand up, we'll stand up the band, we'll be right here.
Everybody stand.
I like that. That's great. Perfect.
Everybody look here, three, two, one.
All right, we got mom?
No, I'm mom, actually.
All right, one more, one more here, here we go.
Get ready to go into public comments. Do you have it online? We could ask them. Alice or Mary or somebody to pull it off the camera.
Can I just say while they're leaving, congratulations Commissioner Dumas on a successful initiative. Glad that we're putting it back in the budget, and Alice as well.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, we're gonna go to the speakers. We have a few speakers. Is it Keat Evans? Kent? Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Kent Evans. You have the floor for two minutes, thank you.
I have two documents, can I just have them?
To the clerk, please, thank you.
If I can say one thing before my two minutes starts, I used to play in parades in Chicago. I'm from Wisconsin. We traveled down there, had the privilege of playing amongst the big buildings. They could do that, too.
Yes.
Commissioners, thank you for serving in the very, in your very important roles, as well as other staff. I wish to address the matter of the stadium lease with the Cincinnati Bengals. According to Forbes Magazine article by Mike Zanini's August 30th, 2023 article, over the next decade, decade, each team is guaranteed just shy of $4 billion. The expired TV money was $9 billion a year. The Players Union negotiated to get roughly 50% of that, which left $4.5 billion per year. Divided by 32 teams, it left $130 million per team per year. The coaches, scouts, ticket sellers, and marketers' travel costs would leave an estimated $100 million for Katie Blackburn and her children. Mike Brown's Korean kids have been cited for bringing in innovative ideas that prove their intellectual gifts. But are they any more gifted than what it takes to oversee Hamilton County? I don't think so, especially given the volume and the wide variety of issues you all deal with. On the topic of trademarks, licensing, and authorization revenue, there is a system generating only for the Bengals by, by just licensing them. Only the Bengals can benefit from this. Even the stadium naming rights appear to be skewered toward the Bengals. This is a stadium the Bengals put no money into building. These guarantees don't include taking money from citizens through taxes. Just say no to Katie Blackburn. The only team in this league that is publicly owned is the Packers, and it should, with this type of income, never feel the need to tap public tax for any stadium needs. By the way, the Packers are prevented from even selling. If it should come to where we found, we fund them with a future opportunity to sell, it makes us dupes. And there are no vicarious benefits that we get in, in terms of money. And that's how we ought to think about this. The money matters.
Thank you.
It's a simple thing. This is probably greater than money, but you have to operate on the money part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have George Burnett. Good afternoon.
My presence is already being felt before this meeting ever started. Commissioner Reese, I'd like to commend you for the work, the diligence, and for the support, and for the action that you've taken to try to rectify the situation with the Veterans Service Commission. I myself am an honorably discharged United States Military Veteran, and it's some, some things in life, there are absolutely no gray areas, and it's either you for the veterans or you're not. And for a person to be an elected official, and to continue to not, like, want to do what's properly right, and by saying that, what I'm saying is this here. Statement was made that there's no oversight from the county commissioners, who allocate the money to the Veterans Commission for the veterans, and for them to give the money back, that's, that's crim, that's basically criminal. And for this to be, have been going on for 30, 35 years with the same person in charge, nepotism, cronyism, old boy network, and then the oversight people, that's like, kind of got some oversight, is the administrative or the presiding judge of common police court, something terribly wrong with that. That is akin to like having a continuing criminal enterprise, which is criminal, and which is like, somewhat like, according to the RICO statute, racketeering, influence, corruption, know what I'm saying? So it's something that's terribly going wrong. And then, we got, we got people that's on the commission, that are in opposition to like, wanting to have some oversight over that, something's terribly wrong with that. Me, as an honorably discharged United States Military Veteran, who have been willing to sacrifice the most valuable thing to me in life, like any other human being, which is my life, for the United States of America, to give the county commissioners the right to run for office and be elected, and then to not do the right thing for the very people that put them in that position, it is abhorrent, and something is terribly wrong with that. I take that we, as Americans, have this right, that we have freedom of speech. I have freely given my freedom of speech. I thank y'all for y'all allowing me to speak. Appreciate you. God bless you, and continue to fight, sister. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. No, that's it, for right now. You've given the love, you've given your life for the country, thank you. On Zoom, we have Jeff Capel. No, on Zoom, our next speaker is from Zoom.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, you have two minutes, can you hear us?
Awesome. Thank you. And first of all, thank you for offering this format for us to speak. Regarding the stadium issue, the question I have is, how much do we want to put into a stadium the next couple of years, when we're not guaranteed to have our main tenant after 2026? It's been particularly since some of this work is not essential to the health of the building. For example, expanding a walkway to alleviate congestion. Well, we've got lots of places in Hamilton County that have congestion 250 days per year. When 60,000 people gather in one spot, some congestion is going to be expected. We have to keep in mind, in any lease negotiation, there is always the possibility that an agreement will not be reached. To ensure proper negotiating leverage, we do have to make sure we proceed with all possibilities on the table. And for example, if I was to walk into an open house and I say, "I've got to buy this house," then I'm not gonna get a very good deal on the house, because they know that they'll be able to extract maximum value out of me. And one of the things that has held up elected officials in the past when dealing with stadiums, is they'll often make comments like, "Well, we can't lose the team, or we have to strike a deal." And when that happens, you lose your negotiating position, because the other side would know then, that they don't really have to negotiate with you. All they would do is stall, stall this out until the end, knowing that you would sign whatever is in front of them before the final deadline happens. So on this issue, while I hope this specific $39 million decision is handled well, the much bigger issue, of course, is just making sure that we proceed with future negotiations in the most beneficial manner possible. So again, thank you for allowing this opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Next is Blue C on Zoom. Are you there, Blue? Blue, you're muted, you have to unmute yourself, so we can hear you. She sent in the comments, okay, we'll just, okay, we'll keep our comments for the record and writing. Okay, it's probably our last meeting, so I'm gonna open it up. Vice President Drew House for comments.
Well, since you put it that way, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, since it's our, presumably our last meeting of the year. And we'll get to a budget conversation later on, which is kind of the wrap-up in the looking forward portion of the meeting. But this is the portion where we're generally giving some comments about where we have been, primarily representing the county. So I attended the County Commissioners Association of Ohio meeting last week. A number of us were up there and was able to give some information out to some of the colleagues, and there were many, many folks from all over the state, there are county commissioners, all of us trying to learn from one another and networking. And so I did a presentation on the Commission on Women and Girls, and a presentation on the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, and One Ohio, trying to talk about what we have done here in this county related to both of those things, and answer any questions anybody had, if they want to replicate some of those things that we're doing down here. Also attended the Groundworks presentation over at Mad Tree. Tanner Yes is the director of Groundworks. We offered them some assistance through one of our grant programs, and they are doing really spectacular things, similar to what we just saw in front of us. But these are outdoor adventures for kids, and so again, the impact that we're having through some of our grant programs on kids and youth in this community is, is really gratifying. I also participated in the swearing-in out in Gulf Manor. I swore in Brittany Kramer, who is a first-time council member. There were a number of first-time council members out in Gulf Manor, and it was a very fun celebration. And then lastly, we just opened the Findlay Market Garage. It opened yesterday. It's been a long time coming. That will be 500-plus spots near Findlay Market, and it will accommodate FC fans during game times. It will accommodate folks that are going to Findlay Market, and the vendors, and all of the residential and commercial development that's happening in that area. There is a great need for parking in that space, and so I was delighted to be there with both of my colleagues, and Jeff Birding, and others, to celebrate the opening, finally, of the Findlay Market Garage. We were looking through an agreement we had with FC to make sure that there would be a community impact, a benefit, a community benefit, when we allocated some dollars for parking spots for FC, and this is the culmination of those efforts. So I was super excited about that. I'll be down there on Sunday with my mom, not circling the block, but parking, hopefully, in the county garage. Hopefully, it won't be full by the time we get down there. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Well, I want Commissioner Drew House to repeat all of that. I mean, just get ready, get out of here.
I'll talk about the garage again, please.
Yes, I'm gonna take a little bit more time. Merry Christmas to all who celebrate Christmas. Merry Kwanzaa, Happy Kwanzaa, and also Happy Hanukkah for those who are celebrating during this season. It's a hard season. We all know what's, what's going on around us, not only locally, but globally. So I pray for all of those who are involved in conflicts around the world. I'll just say a little bit about what I was, have been involved in this week. And so I attended the webinar, the Jobs Ohio webinar. Lots of jobs out there. The job standing is, as far as unemployment is better, vacancies are higher. So just get on those websites all over the place, and try to, if you're interested in a job or changing jobs, to do that. Also, I met with Director Patton at Job and Family Services for a new initiative that I had talked to our board about, the Plaid Initiative, which would basically prepare our young men and young women to go into the world and know how to speak, how to be social, how to go to our interview. I talked to Director Patton about, we know about the fatherhood initiatives, and they are awesome. But I would say that we need a motherhood initiative, that we have mothers that have their children, and they have never been told how to raise children. I know there, there's some training out there. I did some myself, but I'd say we need to pull, push forward and do a little bit more. And he's looking at how Job and Family Services can help. I really got the idea from a program they have over there that says Daddy's Can Do Hair. And I thought it was the greatest thing, because you have a lot of fathers who are taking care of their children, and they don't know how to do their young daughter's hair. And then Judge Wagner, upon my invitation, came over to talk about the Veterans Commission, and what his authority is as it relates to the court. And I think he gave us some things to think about. I appreciate him taking the time to come out and talk about this important problem that's going on as it relates to VSC, and what they're not doing, and what they can do better. And I'm here as a commissioner to try to help any way that I can for veterans. As I said, a couple of weeks ago, my entire family are career veterans, so it's deep in my heart also. And of course, I did, had the White House Intergovernmental Affairs Weekly Update every week. Really not a lot of new stuff, but a lot of money is going out to fund environmental items, veterans, and also just all the gamut of issues that you may be concerned about, violence, youth, whatever. Just get on the White House website and look it up. Lots of grants. If you know people who write grants, they are there. There was one that was out, but the deadline came so quickly, about how do you reduce violence among youth? And that was a great grant. I hope someone here in our county is putting in for it. And then the HCRK Full Coalition Meeting, I had my administrative assistant, Kimberly Lee, attended that as it relates to addiction, and how we're dealing with it, and how we can be more proactive and provide more treatment. I also attended the Findlay Garage ribbon cutting. We're glad that it's come to fruition, and it will help lots of people, the business people, and the people who come down who have never been able to find a place to park. It's about 515 parking spaces that people can use. So happy about that. Just had a meeting this morning with the Hamilton County Branding Strategy Group, who we're looking at trying to develop a better brand for what Hamilton County stands for. A lot of people for many years didn't, had no idea what the commissioners do. Some still don't, but we're trying very hard to educate the public on what we do, what areas we cover, and what our interests are, and also what yours are. So we're looking forward to you letting us more know in 2024. Did we miss the mark, or did we do pretty good? I think we did pretty good. We looked at the gaps in our region. We looked at the gaps in services and resources and people, and we tried to attack all of them, and you'll hear that more as we go over our budget. Finally, I was on a webinar this morning with the International Council of Human Rights. It's a fantastic council. There were members, as I said, I think previously, from Kenya, Zambia, United Kingdom, the West Bank, and Palestine, Britain, just... And they have speakers, about five or six speakers, it only lasts an hour. But they had the leaders, the leader of the United Nation Rights for Children. They had the leader of the International Bar Academy. And something that was said historically, if you go back, the number of dictators in this world right now has increased all across the world, more than ever than before. Individuals are trying to rule the world, and we cannot allow that to happen. We need to speak up as citizens. And it was also said, nowadays, no, there are no opponents to anything. If you, if you oppose anything, then you're a traitor. This was his opinion. And so now people don't allow you in the world to be able to have a different opinion. You need to continue to have your own opinion, and, and if they think you're a traitor, then, you know, that's for them to deal with. The attitude is now is, if you're not with me, then you're against me. And that should not be, because being a human being, you have, you're born with human rights. And one of the ones I love the best is the right to free will. And people don't understand why sometimes you don't do certain things, or you do do certain things. But I have come very comfortable with the ability to have the, to say no, and to have free will to do that, if in my conscience, in my level of integrity, does not allow me to do that. I think that is all that I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. First of all, happy holiday season to everyone in Hamilton County, and wishing everyone to have a safe time. I also wanted to send out blessings to so many people who've lost people. This is a triggering moment this time of year for a lot of folks who have lost loved ones. So please check on them. I know my grandmother passed on Christmas Day. My mother passed three days after Christmas. And so it's always a tough time for our family. So please, if you have time, I would love for us to be able to spend time with our family. Pick up the phone, call a loved one you haven't talked to in so long, maybe you've been so busy this year in the rat race of life. Pick up the phone and just say hello. We had a holiday celebration for our staff today, and I want to thank those who helped me with it. The president, it's the president's job to have the holiday celebration. And we had a great celebration. I want to thank Ms. Viola Brown, who volunteered to coordinate everything. Ms. Teresa Burns, who is a disabled veteran and is my advisor on veteran affairs, because she's out there, she's with the veterans, she's at the VAs, she's talking to them, they're together. So I get a lot of knowledge and understanding on the ground from her, from the policy. But thank you for volunteering today to, to help serve. And also Carmen Thomas, that helped, as well as Ricky Michael. Thank you all. I also wanted to, I wanted to focus on some of the local businesses. And so we had some dishes from a lot of different local businesses that we... that we paid for, and I want to acknowledge some of them. Taste of Julia's Chef Nem, also Goody's BBQ, as well as the Peach Cobbler Factory Grater's, who's my favorite cake. Yeah, I like it from ice cream. I love graters for cake. And also Southern Grace, that is a new business that is open in the Xavier area on Dana Avenue. So we had quite the feast there. So if we fall off to sleep, y'all, pick us back up because we had a lot to eat. But again, to thank our employees, thank you for all your work and everything that you do every day to help us. Couple of things. Most of my week was spent back and forth on the budget. I think this might have been, I don't know, first time we're down to five minutes before the meeting. But back and forth on the budget, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Also, I was in Gulf Manor as well for swearing in of the new officers. And I got the honor of swearing in Mayor Dinsmore, and I want to thank him for that invitation. And congratulations to all the new council members. Also, as mentioned earlier, was at the opening of the Findlay Market Garage as well. And the day after, did a video for Findlay Market regarding shopping local. And I encourage people to shop local. We have small businesses here that need your money. So whenever you shop local, let's have that dollar turn three to five times before it leaves Hamilton County to create jobs and retain small businesses and allow them to grow. So I am promoting shopping local. In addition to that, we attended an event where the governor was a speaker put on by government strategies. Chip Gerhardt, thank you for the invitation. The governor was speaking, and I am also, I've also been on the capital budget for the state budget. And it was announced that there would be like a $700 million statewide. And I asked the governor directly with everybody in there, hey, we need our fair share. How much money is coming to Hamilton County? And so he pulled me to the side afterward. He says, you always fight. Every time I see you fight for Hamilton County. I said, we got to get our fair share. But we're meeting and hearing a lot of great programs and make a recommendation up to the state. Also, attended the Who's Who in Black Cincinnati. That came back in existence. It was in existence when I was very younger, and my parents were in there. And so to come back this year and be acknowledged in a section of influential leaders, I really appreciate that, as well as my chief of staff was in the Emerging Leader component. So you can get the magazine, the Who's Who in Black Cincinnati. And it's so many other people at a time when young people need to see someone that looks like them that maybe came from similar backgrounds, same neighborhoods, to tell them that you can be anything that you want to be. And so I think, I want to thank Real Time Media for bringing this back to light, as well as Tia Rochelle, who is the owner of Johnny on the spot. And there were several corporate leaders who have helped sponsor this. So that was very good. I also went to Columbus for the Ohio Association of County Commissioners and Administrators, and I had a chance to present the 513 Relief Bus. They kept saying 513, but now they know it's 513, Relief Bus, and got a lot of great feedback from fellow commissioners who said, man, we wish we had this in our area. And how did you do it? And so that was very, very good. We also have a youth sports survey out. One of the things I've been pushing is let's look at this amateur sports. We've got, I think, some of the top amateur youth athletes from Hamilton County, some of the best in America. But it's a $91 billion youth sports tourism industry, and we're not really getting our fair share of that. Moms and dads and grandmas and aunties as well. Coaches were jumping in these SUVs. They used to be minivans. They told them, quit saying minivans. We're cool now. We're cool parents. But they jump in these SUVs and are running all over the place instead of bringing it here. When you bring it here, you bring the college coaches. When you bring it here, you bring the streaming services. So people are looking at our kids. When you bring it here, they're staying in hotels here in our location. And so we've got the professional sports. But on the amateur side, we're running all over the place. And on the amateur side, it's every single weekend. There's a cheerleading competition, soccer competition, basketball competition, volleyball, you name it, flag football. Every weekend, there's some youth competition. And I wanted us to look at it, and I appreciate my colleagues agreeing for us to look at it. It was supposed to be done by this year as a study, but because of some of the employment issues, we lost someone, and it's hard to get people in. We got started on a little later. So there is a youth sports survey. Go to our page, our Hamilton County page, and click there. They want to hear from you. Want to hear from coaches, want to hear from referees, want to hear from parents, want to hear from grandparents, student athletes. The survey is there, and Friday is the last day to hit that survey. So I wanted to make sure of that. Let's see, one more thing. Oh, and then also on tomorrow, I'm super excited about this. Uzi Collins has produced and written himself and put his own money up to do a tribute song to the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And I just think that's phenomenal. Rock and Roll Hall of Famer. He's also in our Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And to use his talent for the his own money, his own production. They were saying, I can't wait to hear it. They said they sent it to Nashville, and Nashville's gonna, they're remixing it, and then they're going to get it out, and it's going to be out there. And I'm just like, wow. So tomorrow at 5:30 to 7:30 at the Black Music Walk of Fame, he's going to unveil it. So if you want to come down and dance, have a good time, bring the kids and have a festive time. It's absolutely free. Come on down, and there'll be some hot cocoa. I'll provide some hot cocoa for anybody that needs it because it might be a little chilly, but it's going to be a lot of fun. So that's all that I have for my announcements.
Madam Chair.
Yes. I have a couple of other things I'd like to say when you're done.
For your announcement?
No, for my report, yeah.
Okay. Are we, is it one of the, is it dealing with the budget?
No, nothing with the budget, no.
All right. Madam Commissioner Doos, you always want to come behind me, the President.
I don't even think of it that way.
But go ahead, no, go ahead.
I just forgot to say a few things. First of all, I was wanting to thank you. And I was thanking you for bringing the food for us, for the staff, and everything that could stop me this morning stopped me from getting here. So my assistant was able to get me a plate.
Yeah, we have to make sure she has a plate.
There's nothing like leftovers, so I wanted to thank you. Secondly, I wanted to thank Mayor Smith at Silverton for allowing us to come over there for the meeting. And lastly, I forgot about the Leah Institute. They gave out awards. They selected some great women for the Spirit of Deborah Award. Deborah, for those of you who don't know, is in the Bible. She's a biblical character. And just a couple of characteristics. She's a leader. She's a warrior, and she has compassion. Actually, in the Bible, there were many men who would not go to war without her being with them. They thought they would lose their battle. One of them was named Barack. But she's just a strong, powerful woman in the Bible. And I really thank the Leah Institute for choosing me to receive the Spirit of Deborah Award. And that's all I have.
All right.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Ludo, do you have announcements before we go to the?
No major announcements, Commissioner. Just wanted to wish, as you, as the commissioners did, just wish everyone a Happy Holiday Season, a Happy New Year, especially to all the county employees, to thank them for all the work that they've done this year. It's been a very productive year of implementing a lot of new things for the county. So want to thank the board for your policy guidance as we move through the year. We're going to execute the 2024 version of that hopefully here shortly. And just on a more individual note, and the board did this as well, but I just want to thank the entire team of employees that were part of the Findlay Market Garage project that opened this week, that the board had the chance to be at. Phil Beck, in particular, for all of his work and making sure that happened, that came down to the wire a little bit to get the TCO to make sure that we could get into there and people could park there this week. But that did occur. So I want to thank Phil, want to thank all of our colleagues over at the city who also chipped in to help make sure that could happen as well. So thank you, Commissioner Reese. Back to you.
Thank you. I'd like to advance item number 10, 11, and 14.
And Madam President, if you'd like, I could tee those off if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So assuming we're looking at the correct ones. Item number 10 is resolution is a buy leave item. And Commissioners, we have quite a robust slate of buy leave items today, as is typical for our last meeting of the year. This is a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County and the Cincinnati Bengals. This resolution was, the version in front of you today is a version of the resolution that was presented to you on Tuesday. So again, just a bit of a summary on this as we prepare to enter into discussions, lease discussions with the Cincinnati Bengals in 2024. And based upon the team's investment of roughly $32 million into Paycor Stadium over the past year and a half, this MOU authorizes approximately $39 million in projects during 2024. These projects are all infrastructure projects that were identified for the early year implementation in the facility condition assessment that the board had approved or had received recently. So this allows us to make progress on a relatively compact set of projects while we work on a long-term agreement with the team and while we work on a framework for the implementation of a comprehensive and transformative renovation of the stadium. The resolution and the MOU includes projects such as lighting system, the building management system, deep well pumps, club seats, which is the first project out of the gate, which is on the agenda for later in the meeting, vertical transportation analysis, building code accessibility, handicap accessibility studies. So most of these are projects that are relevant to the stadium generally as opposed to simply just football operations. So as the board thinks about the stadium as an asset and the use of the stadium across the board, these are mostly projects that are required for the general health of the stadium as a entertainment and a gathering venue. The resolution before you today does include language indicating specifically that all the projects listed will be bid in accordance with the county's MBE, WBE, and SBE inclusion policies. So those are the policies that the board actually recently approved much earlier on this year that come from a recommendation from the county's disparity study. So the construction projects that are listed here will be bid in accordance with those projects or with those policies and rules. Whether or not the individual project is applicable to those rules will depend upon the nature of the project. Some projects are very relatable to the inclusion, MBE, WBE, et cetera. Some, just given the nature of the procurement, are not. So it will depend upon the individual project. But all of the projects are subject to those requirements. So they either must work through those requirements or execute the appropriate waivers if that is necessary for that particular project. So that language is the only language, really, that was added since Tuesday. Commissioners, I just wanted to draw your attention to it. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or any comments.
Okay, I'm going to open it up. Vice President Dryhouse.
I'm sorry. You wanted to advance to three items. I only covered the first one. Is that okay? Did you want to move on with this?
Yeah, first one is the, okay, go ahead with the other two. They're related.
Yeah, they are related. So item number 10 was the MOU. Then we have the award and the execution of ITB 023 and the execution of an agreement with Irwin Seat Company. This is at 4.072 million. This is the club seat replacement project. This replaces most of the club seats in Paycor Stadium. And these are seats that are, as we discussed on Tuesday, roughly 23 years old, hitting the end of life. And this is one of the, another project that was identified in the facility condition assessment. There's approximately 12,000 of these seats. And so you have before you the resolution approving that. These were put out to bid. This is an award to the low bidder, Irwin Seat Company. There also is before you item number 14, and that is simply the resolution that appropriates the funding for that particular project. So that is Budget Adjustment Number 37, which is on your agenda as Buy Leave 14. So those are all three projects, Commissioners.
Hey, I'll open it up. Vice President Dryhouse.
Thank you. As was discussed at our last meeting, these are projects that were identified primarily through the facilities assessment plan. We've got many, many millions of dollars of renovations that are needed at the stadium. And so this is the start of this process to try to address some of the things that are basic to that facility being accessible, to being safe for both the players and the fans and folks that attend concerts and the upcoming events that we all anticipate coming into this community asset. And so as you look through the list of some of the projects that have been identified and performed by the Bengals and the list of the projects identified and will be performed by the county, they are infrastructure projects related to concessions, signage, lighting. We've got deep well pumps on the list for the county. I am glad that some of our accessibility related to ADA are identified here. We're talking about escalators. And so these are very basic projects that need to move forward. And we've got a window of time coming up after the season to start to chip away at this kind of suite of projects while the Bengals are not playing and we don't have anything else going on in the stadium. And so the unique thing, I think, about what we have in front of us is the split, the financial split. We have not in the past had the team contributing to the 50-50. It's a little 55 county to 45 team. But more to the point, the team is part of the financial stack here. And my hope is that as we launch into serious negotiations early next year related to the lease, that this will serve as a roadmap for the financial stack for the projects moving forward. Although we have all identified that we would like the stack to look something like the county, the team, the NFL, and the state all participating, as they have in other parts of the country when it comes to doing these kind of renovations. Last time, the county citizens burdened, had the burden of about 96% of what happened to that stadium. We do not expect that to happen in the future. And if this is any indication, that is not going to happen in the future. So I think this is good news. I think it is a positive sign from the Bengals. And again, I hope this is a roadmap moving forward as we start to address some of the facility needs at Paycor Stadium in a very responsible way in collaboration with the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Doos.
Thank you. Just some general comments. When we talk about the 96% is not expected to happen, it won't happen. Not while I'm still a commissioner, if I have anything to do with it. And I think we all agree with that. As was said earlier, the Bengals, the team is already putting more money in than they ever have and that, you know, should have before. But they're doing it now. The split is much better. And there's a slow realization that change is good. And I think they're realizing we're not going to falter on this. And the residents will not be left holding the bag. So from thorough research and my diligent review of what we're looking at passing, I'm ready to vote on this, on these. That's all I have.
Thank you. Let me just say, and it'll be a theme that you'll hear later as we go through the budget because it all is in one thing. I am for one set of rules. I'm not for one set of rules if you're somebody and another set of rules if you're somebody else. And if we're going to keep promises, I want to be clear. Not only am I going in trying to move from the 96% where the tax... trying to move from the 96% where the taxpayers pay for 96% of all costs and upgrades, and the team pays about 4% in terms of the contract, but I'm also looking for a contract that will keep a commitment to the taxpayers of Hamilton County. Now, I'm a huge sports person, and I'm a huge Bengals fan. Everybody would know if they go back and get pictures from a long time ago. I'm a big fan. But my job now is to take off the fan hat and be the negotiator on behalf of the taxpayers of Hamilton County. Whether you like football or not, you're paying for it. Whether you're a, this gentleman, he's in a Packers sweater that he came up, but he's paying for it. Whether he's for the Bengals or not for the Bengals, whether Grandma don't care about football or does care about football, you're paying for it. And so we've got to go to the table negotiating on behalf of our shareholders who are the taxpayers of Hamilton County. And so when I ran, I ran on three things. I'm coming to shake things up. I'm coming to open up the process. And I'm coming to teach you what county government does and fighting for one set of rules. We can't have one group come and, oh, man, we got all this money. And another group come, oh, man, we broke. One group of people come, we got a lifetime contract. Another group of people come, oh, we can't just do that. I'm on one set of rules. So today, we're on the old contract. And it's interesting because this contract superseded all of us. But we got to vote on it. And I would like the same thing on some of these other projects, which you'll hear about later. Now, I appreciate them putting, and I'm not here to judge what they put into their, what they chose to fund. But I can say that when you're funding concessions, upgrades, and you're getting all the concession money, you probably would want to upgrade it. You're getting, when they buy popcorn and everything and beers, you're gonna, you want to get a great concession that go to us. Hamilton Kelly doesn't make any money off of popcorn, hot dogs. We don't make no money off of the off of the beers. So no, we wouldn't be upgrading the concessions. Stadium signage, for us to get something on the stadium signage, we got to pay. We just heard about that, even with veterans there. Butler County and Warren County, they're paying to be on there. We're not paying. So yeah, we probably wouldn't do the stadium signage because that's where the sponsors go. And you kind of, you get paid to put the stuff on the signage. The other thing we have, fan gear renovations. Why would we make fan gear? When you buy outfit, we don't get anything. We have no licensing. So yes, I would expect the team to want to have a great fan gear renovation. So you can sell more gear and make more money. No problem. VIP level lounge. Well, we're not in the ticket selling business. So why would we even fund something like that? Suite renovations, we don't make any money off the suites. So I'm not downing these things. These are all great things, but these are things that also allow for more revenue. But the taxpayers, we don't get any revenue on that. So we're going with some other items that are non-revenue generators that is part of our contract, the old contract, and we're moving forward. I want to say this, though, stadium accessibility, Mr. Luda, I want to have a component. I have asked, when I got here, that all entrances be handicap accessible. And I've been to some games and the people that are don't have accessibility, they're standing in line, then they say, go around to another place to the handicap entrance. There is no handicap entrance. If I vote for this, I want all entrances to be handicap accessible. So I want to put that on record. I don't want to come back and say, well, they can't do it. And all entrances should be handicap accessible. We're putting in $39 million to upgrades. The other thing is about the field replacement, which is on this list, and it concerns me because we're saying, oh, we're not dealing with the new lease. But when you start talking about doing a whole new field, that gets into a new lease for me. So I would hope that this does not come back and say, we voted for it. Now we got to give a new field. Because what I'm concerned about is a piecemeal approach. Doesn't mean I'm not for these things, but let's get it in the context of having a lease. I'm giving you a new lease. You're going to go, you're going to stay here longer? Okay, so now let's talk about all these upgrades. But what I don't want to do is have all these upgrades, and then we're stuck with an elephant. Somebody said, well, we didn't sign no, we didn't sign no lease. So I'm willing to go with this today. But after today, I don't want to see this again. It's time to get down to the lease. It's time to get at the table. And I know in my conversation with them, they're saying, we're holding it up. So I'm saying, I don't want to hold it up. January, we need to get busy of trying to get what the lease is. Mr. Evans gave some good information. I'd like to have some of his questions answered. I'd like it to be a part of the discussions. So please get the tape and get his transcript. And I would like for the administration to address some of the items that he put forward. Those are the things that I'm concerned about. And item number, oh, and the other thing, I'm just going to be clear with you. I don't want the same negotiation that happened 20 years ago. Now, I know we all say, oh, we ain't going to do it, we ain't going to do it. But there's some traits that I think are leading in that direction, and I don't like it. Number one, when this stadium was built, it was one of our biggest public projects. I wasn't here, we weren't here. But it seemed like the same process is traveling around. We had zero inclusion, absolutely zero. And so the answer can't be where it applies, we're going to try to do some inclusion. I'm not supporting anything that's leaving people out. Now, I don't know, before I got here, there was some voting on lifetime contracts down there on the banks. And it says that anything on the banks, these folks have a lifetime contract. And I've brought it up, it's on the video, and and it seemed that there was, everybody was okay with it. I'm not okay with it. So I don't want any tricks. We put this little language in, then you come back, well, they got a lifetime contract. We got to go with them. And zero inclusion. I had an architect stop me, Hispanic, said he can't get in on it. Zero inclusion. I looked at the African Americans, zero inclusion. So we going to do the same thing they just did 20 years ago. Zero inclusion. And you can't blame the Bengals because y'all, the county is saying, we going to do it. Bengals, we don't trust y'all to do it. We going to do it. And we walking around with zero inclusion. So I don't want this little line in here, and then you come back, oh, we couldn't do it because of former commissioners. Before I got here, I don't know if you guys were there, maybe you were. I don't, well, this lifetime contract was not too long ago. But there's lifetime contracts. And it wasn't 20 years ago. It just happened. They had a bid, you said it was a bid that went out, and the commission went for it. I wasn't here. They went for lifetime contracts. And I'm tired of hearing that we, our hands are are handcuffed because of what the county has done. Now, if the county is going to lead on this, there's no sense of having no disparity study, a dog and pony show. Because when I got here, we wasn't spending but $1,400 down there. You did $16 million in upgrades for that stadium, and you only spent $1,400. And I'm here to tell you, it's unacceptable with me. It's unacceptable. And I'm not going to sit here. I don't care if I'm counted down. I don't care if I'm voted down. I'm going to the people and telling them what's really going on. So please, I hope you didn't slide it in here with some little trick, little thing come back, because you just said it. When applicable, it's always applicable. We're collecting diverse taxes. This is sales tax. You buy some bubble gum, you paying for this stadium. We don't diversify and say, well, we not, we don't have you in there so you don't have to put your money toward that, because we have zero Hispanics, zero African Americans, and probably zero women. So I'm not happy about that. And then today you came, you got everything, you ready to go. You got, you got the RFP out, you got this. I want to say that I will vote for this, but I want on the record that if this does not have the inclusion, then you need to bring it back to us. So that's what I'm concerned about. I know we put some language, and I was happy with it until you made your statement. And you said, when applicable. I think it should always be applicable. Is it always applicable? You said, when applicable?
So what the what the resolution language says, what the MOU language indicates, is that the all of the projects that are bid will be subject to the county's procurement policies, which include the inclusion, MBE, WBE language. So all of them, all projects or the inclusion policies are applicable to all of them. What I what I wanted to stress is depending upon what is bid, there may or may not be an MBE, for example, on the club seats. The club seats, in terms of the firms that are out there that manufacture these, there are no MBE, WBE firms that manufacture them. So if we're bidding something that doesn't have that environment around, that environment of of MBE, WBE, et cetera, then we're not going to get that response. But
No, I got that. But I'm asking you, what else on the 39 million is not bid? You talking about the bid. Is there some no bid positions with the 39 million?
In terms of the projects that are being bid?
Yeah, the 39 million, is there anything that's not bid out?
The only thing that of that entire 39 that would not be quote bid out would be the, so as we've talked about, we're using our architectural partners, our architectural and engineering partners, our existing architectural and engineering partners for this for this work.
How are they existing? Because that's what I'm getting. Architects, I've got an African American architect firm, I got a Hispanic architect firm, said they're not in it. So how are these architect firms, you said our partners, I don't remember, I know I didn't vote on it. When was these people voted on?
So our current architectural partner, structural partner is THP. So they are bringing under, they're bringing sub consultants under them to assist with this, as well as like Messer on the
Well, how did those two entities, are they on a lifetime project for the banks?
They were selected through competitive procurement. I'll have to check on each of them. I know THP
Not for this project. They were for what project?
For the for the riverfront, for the river.
Oh, riverfront. And that's forever.
But now, but now, well, now THP, I know, is part of the the procurement process that we are going through right now, where we go through a process of selecting various architectural partners, structural partners, et cetera. So that process for both general facilities in the stadia is ongoing right now. So those things do turn over from time to time. So
Yeah, I'd like to know the timeline.
Sure.
I was told that they have the riverfront. And you know, that's a lot of, that's a long time to develop a riverfront.
Yeah. So
These are the architects, so they can't get in.
Yeah, to your point, though, as we've talked about, the the all of the, even on the recognizing that we're using our current architectural and engineering partners to because primarily because of timing, of hitting this construction timing window, we will, and we have approached our partners and said, we need to have inclusion in this project. And we need you as our as our A and E partners to pull inclusion onto your teams. So we are currently working on that. I think they're making progress. I'll update the board on it. But trying to make sure that even though we've got the projects that are bid that will be subject to our inclusion policies and procedures, that the existing partners, we want to make sure that we're not doing business as usual there either, and that we're getting inclusion onto those teams as well.
Yeah. My thing is the timing is, they always run with us. It's timing. We got to hurry up. If you're leaving people out, hold up. Because it's not, it's not the right thing to do. And I caught this when, you know, you said, every contract we got, we put MBE, wasn't in here when we, you brought it to us on Tuesday. I'm glad it's in here. I just want to make sure that we've got something that's real, not something to just say, we the check mark. And I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not in a rush if it's the wrong deal. And I'm not in a rush if you're leaving people behind. There is no rush. So you're saying that we would have some inclusion. This is the old, this is part of the old contract. But in January, I'm expecting to see a schedule on what we're doing with the lease. The Bengals know it, we would know it, the people would know it. So that we're not, from the people's standpoint, it didn't get presented until Tuesday. And we're voting on Thursday. Now, we had some behind the scenes meetings, but I'm trying to get this from behind the scenes and get it out in the public. So I will, I will support this today. But I'm telling you now, I don't want no more piecemeal approaches. It's time to get down to the nitty gritty. And that is the lease that's coming up, because it's going to take some time to to look at it. And there are a lot of things, the 96%, which was mentioned earlier, where all the risk is on the taxpayers, that has to change. But also, it has to be more of a revenue sharing approach, diversified funding model, which was mentioned earlier with the NFL, of course, and the state. The average public portion into these stadiums is about 33 to 40%. We're at 96. So I think we've got a lot of work to do. But also, on our side, I don't want us to get ourselves off the hook if we claim we going to be for diversity, because we vote on this stuff every week. And every time you say, can't find nobody, we ain't got nobody, we can't find nobody. Well, we got to hold up. We got to hold up and do it right. So I want to, I wanted to highlight that. And also, when we did the red seats, the Innahoskins was over our second, our reentry program. And they did a partnership with the reentry program. I don't know if that's a possibility with the seats over there to partner with Trina Jackson and her team, which created job opportunities. So I wanted to put that on the table. With that, I will make a motion.
I have a, I have some comments.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Dumas.
Jeff, as it relates to the lifetime agreements, when was the last time that the commission signed for lifetime agreements?
Commissioner, I apologize. I'll have to
Five years ago, 10 years ago? Because I don't remember sitting here.
I don't think there's anything out there. I think Commissioner Reese's term is of lifetime is is the is the term she's using. I don't think there's anything that you've signed off on that says lifetime on it. But I will, I'll go back and if, on a vendor by vendor basis, I can follow up with the board and say when we approved each vendor down there. If that'd be helpful, just to give you a history of for every partner we have, how long they've been there, when the when the last contract was approved, when amendments were, I can give you all that. I just
That would be helpful. I know when I first came and we were, we had what we call sole proprietors for social service, and they were guaranteed like three years. And I question like, how are they guaranteed? Are there scales that we look at what they've been doing in order to get another year? So something like lifetime would be something that I don't remember signing for or agreeing to, because there needs to be some flexibility. And as relates to due diligence, of course, I personally, when I first came in 19, minority inclusion was and is on top of my list. So and I think it, I can't speak for everybody, but I think our board is very much aware of that and making sure that that's a top priority for me and for our board. And so as I look at MOUs and RFPs, that I make sure that we're being more inclusive. And our numbers are going up as it relates to the ability to perform some of those duties. But as you were saying, Jeff, some of them are specialized, but we have to reach out more. And that's why Robert is here and has his bold list. But that doesn't include everybody, because everybody doesn't know about it. So I sit here today just making sure that minority inclusion is on the top of our, on our list as a board. So
Thank you. On the, I want to just respond to one quick thing, and then I'll return it back over to you. I had mentioned this, we can go back to, I asked the clerks to go back and get the tape. But there was a presentation here and on the banks. And it was during the time we was trying to start with a Black music walk thing. And when we came up, I know Phil was presenting. And I asked about the contracts. And they said they had the contracts for the life of the banks. And then I said, wait a minute, this is lifetime. And I wanted to see if we could open the process up. And the comments that I received, I was in the minority, was, we want to continue with the continuity. It's on the tape. And so all I'm saying is now, is we now got the 39 million. And they said, well, these are lifetime contracts. We can't have inclusion. We got to figure out a way. And even the resolution, even though we said, we, you know, we did all this, we had Robert, Robert Bell wasn't even involved in this resolution. And I stopped it and said, wait a minute, where is the inclusion? So all I was just trying to say, and I know that that's been what our board has wanted, I just wanted to make sure it's in writing and that there is an effort. I don't want them to come back and say, well, now these people them to come back and say, well, now these people got lifetime, we can't get inclusion. And I'm just trying to, that's what I was told before, and I just want to make sure with the Bengals situation, I don't want to go back and do what we did 20 years ago, which was zero, and we've had lots of stuff come through here, $16 million in one quarter, and we only spent $1,400 a minority. So, and then, when we did, we have this, we were going to pass this, and it wouldn't have had the inclusion stuff, which I was very happy with, but then when Mr. Ludo said, when is applicable, that's when I was a little concerned.
And I agree with you, but some things you can't change, if it's a lifetime agreement, we can figure out how do we go to court and sever the agreement, but the things that we can change moving forward, we need to be adamant about making sure that that happens.
Commissioner, Vice President Drew.
Yeah, two things, one is that I'm glad the language is in there, it further defines what we have all said, which is what we, that we want diversity in every aspect of how we do business, whether it's on the banks or anywhere else, we want to make sure that we're including people in this community in the growth of what we are doing and the economic development of what we are doing. So, it's good to have the language in there, I think the applicability is when there are not vendors available, WBE or MBE, then obviously, we have to move forward with someone that isn't in one of those categories. But the other thing that I think is important to understand and to note is that we now have a disparity study in this county. We have not had a disparity study in the past few years, it was something that was initiated, Victoria Parks, when she was here, offered a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County, I supported that and included the disparity study in that resolution, and it took a couple of years for us to conclude the disparity study, but now we have a new policy in this county that we have not had in the past, and we certainly didn't have 20 years ago, when we were building out some of the banks. And so, that applies to all projects, including the projects at the banks. And so, when you talk about the purchasing and all of the activity in that space, it, the disparity study will apply to all of that. And so, I think this commission has been very clear, both past and present, in the recent past and present, that we value the diversity of the workforce, we value the diversity of the folks that are getting the larger contracts, and we want to make sure that we are being true to our word, and so that the language is now in the contract, I think is a good idea, but the disparity study also is in play here, and that's something that we have made sure of when it comes to everything that we do moving forward.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and just out of respect to those two architectural firms who came, who've done big projects, we've got some people, they were ready to go, it's not one of those, we're not talking about the seats, we're talking about, it was brought up to me by two architects who happen to be minority, and they said, all of a sudden, now they're locked out, so we don't have a decline in people who can do it, but they've been locked out. And then to the administrator, I think the board has been clear, but you brought something to us without the inclusion language, and that worried me, because you're the one that's going to be out there, you should tell all consultants, all the legal consultants, please make sure that's in there already, don't come, I don't have to put it in, I don't have to look it over, if we had a disparity study, I'm trying to put some action to it, it should automatically be in there, everything as the boiler language, and again, I don't want to put out there, oh, we don't have people who can do it, these are people who could do it, who came and been calling me and said, you're doing it like y'all did 20 years ago, you're going to lock us out, and we're saying we're doing it different. So, I just want to make sure the message of our board is the same message you're giving in, in your paperwork, and like I said, I was for it until you just said, when applicable, and that made me a little nervous.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, and I think hopefully, we've clarified what that applicable means, I think the commissioner's had a discussion on that, I think that's understood. In terms of the language in the, in the MOU, I think it's, it is good to have it in there, so Commissioner, thank you for suggesting it, I think it's, it's helpful so that the public understands that these projects are all bid according to this. I just want the commission to be assured that we bid a lot of projects that are authorized in various ways, and the, every single project we bid, whether it's under county facilities or somewhere else, is now subject to those inclusion policies, WB policies, MBE policies. So, over at county facilities routinely, when something is going out to bid, and now the first stop is in Robert Bell's office to determine what goals are set for these projects in terms of MBE, WB, et cetera, regardless of whether there is any enabling legislation from the board or not specifying that. So, I just wanted the board to be assured that we, we would definitely do that, but at the same time, I think it's good to have it in the resolution, it's good to have it in the MOU, because that is the publicly facing document, and I think the public should know that we are in fact bidding these in accordance with our WBE and MBE policies.
Thank you, I want it on the bid and the no bid contracts, both. With that, I recommend passage, right, it was 10, 11, and 14.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
And then, on January, will you come back with us so we can put together a calendar of how we're moving forward and working with the Bengals on a timeline?
That is under development, absolutely.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to advance item number 13.
So, that's the tot, you don't want to do the budget?
Probably 13 is the occupancy tax. Got it?
Yep.
There it is, got it. Thank you, Commissioners, so probably 13, this is resolution number 47 in your packet. This involves the distribution of transient occupancy tax residual and a process for doing that. The resolution before you recognizes that we are entering into, anticipate entering into a new common plan of finance with the City of Cincinnati, Visit Cincy and the northern communities as it relates to the transformation of the convention district, the county lever, levies a transient occupancy tax or hotel motel tax, which goes to fund the, the infrastructure development of our convention center and our convention infrastructure. So, as those dollars are used, as those technologies are used for paying debt service associated with that infrastructure and for marketing and promotion of that infrastructure, at the end of the day, there is always a little bit of money left, and we've worked with the City of Cincinnati, we've worked with Visit Cincy and the northern communities to develop a, a strategy and a plan for how those dollars are used, and as is always the case, there will be a, a portion of those dollars that at the end of the day falls to what we call residual transient occupancy tax, and there's a portion of that that is entirely at the discretion of the county. So, the resolution before you today is direct, is policy direction and guidance as to how this will be implemented in the future and how those residual dollars will be allocated in the future. And the way it currently reads is that the first 350,000 of that, the residual tax revenue would go for maintenance costs at the Black Music Walk of Fame, with the remainder of those operations being funded from parking operations, the next 350,000 for marketing efforts at Visit Cincy, thereafter, there would be a 50-50 split until each entity receives $500,000. After that time, the board will discuss the highest and best use, use for additional allocations. So, Commissioners, this is ultimately a policy decision of the board. Madam President, I'll turn it back to you for discussion, happy to answer any questions if we, if I can.
Thank you very much, I will start off, because I know this is the one that I was pushing for, we all had things we're pushing for in this budget, and I'm very disappointed on this component of the budget. On the Ohio banks, everything down there, we're doing 20-year-plus deals, and so, when the Walk of Fame was built, it was the only equity project that we were building, we weren't building the Freedom Center, I was on council when we did that, and now we've got a Black Music Walk of Fame out of 198 acres, we're only getting a half an acre, and we built it, and the question was, how would you sustain it? And it's always been a struggle for, you know, this project, and the thing that bothers me, and I've been fighting for this my entire life, and it doesn't mean everybody that, you know, fights for this, but this is what I fight for, one set of rules, one set of rules. Now, I came with a sustainable model and a restricted fund that will continue to have this funded whether I'm here or not, just like now, we just went along with a, with $39 million, voting on something we wasn't even around, but we said we going with it. But when it comes to the African-American community, we always want to give, first of all, it's super hard to get something passed, we were only doing $1,400, and we said, well, we were doing our best, we had a study. $1,400 out of 16 million, that was just one quarter. We've got a, we're going to do $30 million for the fans that we go over there, and that's forever. We pay them, it's a forever deal. When it comes to the African-American community, we can never get a forever, except forever paying taxes without getting something really back for it. But let's talk about this tot, something that I helped create when I was on city council to help expand the Convention Centers. When you look at the Cincinnati Music Festival, now, it's not African-American owned, but the audience is 98% African-American, and when they come to town, the hotels go up triple and quadruple, you can check the rates. This is not a one-time thing, it's every single year. Sometimes they even start saying you only can have two towels. Come in, we can't change the sheets, but the African-Americans come year after year after year. And so, last year, just alone, we brought in 9.6 million dollars just that weekend for hotel and not treated at the highest level. There was one time, a bus came in, and they locked the bathrooms and told them you couldn't check in at four o'clock, this is the stuff they got to go through. So, now we got the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, we built it, and so, what I'm saying in this tot, we put, we got 9.6 million coming in from black folks that goes in this tot, and that was a down year for the festival. Now, they got, you know, some entertainment, the people, you know, last year, they weren't happy with the lineup. With an unhappy lineup, we did 9.6 million. What are we going to do when the people get happy? They claim they like this lineup now. So, we get this money and we put it in, and it goes to what? Garages. It goes to the CVB, it goes to convention center expansions, but not one dime specific to the African-American community. So, the only thing I asked, I said, let's don't do the general fund, let's get it from a restricted fund, let's get it from the audiences that are coming to town, let's get it from that. I said, Mr. Ludo said, well, if we do it from there, it'll take up all the money and we won't be able to do other things. I said, wow, that's a good point, maybe we leave 50% if we got to do something out in Sharonville, if we got to do something somewhere else. So, now that I put that on the table, then all of a sudden, here comes the convention and visitors bureau. The same group that gets $8 million from this fund, got $11 million in reserve, and then voluntarily said, we'll give up 3 million for the Convention Center expansion. So, you voluntarily did that, and in the paperwork, we said, we will even pay you back for the $3 million you put in. So, the only thing I'm asked, only thing I asked, for this little half an acre out of 198 acres, by the way, where African-Americans lived, it was called Buck Town, and there's no, you can't find Buck Town nowhere, it got ran out of there when we came in, in terms of the county before we got here, we spilled garages and said, we can have stadiums. So, the stadiums come in and get a 20-year deal, the people working on the banks get a lifetime deal, and we got the tape, because I asked Phil, I said, is this forever? He said, as long as we're developing on the banks. And I asked, hey, can we make a change? And the response I had from right here was that we want to keep consistency. And we get the tape, I didn't have time, I just didn't know, they took me all the way up to the last five minutes, and then said, no, we can't do it, we can't do this Black Music Walk of Fame unless we do the convention and visitors bureau, that's already getting $8 million, already got $11 million in, in, in the bank, in reserve, voluntarily said, it won't hurt us, we're going to put up 3 million, but now, when African-American project come, we got to find something else. And there was no interest, no interest in trying to work with me on this one little half acre, but we just put $39 million for a 20-year deal, and he just got some people who's going to get the contract that's always had contract. So, the only thing I asked was not to take the whole thing, would take 50%, and they said, well, we want to put a cap on it, we're going to put $500,000 cap, you ain't never gave nothing to African-Americans, you're down here at $1,400 out of 16 million, and nobody said anything. So, now we come with this, and I'm saying, let's make it where it's not coming from, we ain't taking it from the property taxes, we ain't taking it from the sales tax, take it from the tax of the people that's coming to town. But you want their money to go to something else, like you've been doing for years, they've been having $107 million impact for years, and we've been taking that money, it's almost like how the veterans feel, taking that money and putting it to somebody else. Now, I'm not happy about it, and I might lose in here today, but I'm going to tell everybody, because there's a lot of people came down there, and one of the things they said, they ain't going to let us have that down here. I want something when I'm going, we just got here, and we doing something when the people was here is gone. We want something permanent, we want something permanent, but bringing in 9.6 million, and you want to cap it at 500,000? Come on now, do the math, take the calculator out, get your percentages together. So, we build something, and then no sustainable model, and 10 years, no, that ain't good enough, because you just gave the Bengals 20, and you're going to give them another 20. You gave the Reds 20, you're going to give them another 20. We got a garage down over the Rhine, it's, it's forever, $30 million forever, costs more than the Walk of Fame. We got a tailgate space we getting ready to do, we done paid those people and some of the money, and they ain't even left yet. So, I didn't want to go there, and people could challenge me, and this is for operations only, and I had to go out and get private money for the stars. And now you only say, well, we only going to get the black community 10 years, come on, man, this is outrageous, this is outrageous. And then when you come with something, it's permanent, it's 20 years, it's 40 years, you ain't doing, you ain't doing no 10-year deals on this other stuff? We ain't got a 10-year deal on the garage and over the Rhine, they ain't got a 10-year deal? We ain't got a 10-year deal on the garage on the banks, that ain't a 10-year deal? And then for the convention and visitor bureau, one of your top events, you want to come in and slice your own wrists, the people that's been bringing people year after year after year after year? How many more $9.6 million was brought in? So, that's why I said, it's got to be one set of rules. Even with the homeowners, it's one set of rules, I come with the homeowners, we can't do nothing, we go with the Bengals, well, we got to do something, come on, we got to move to one set of rules. Now, I'm not going to be popular, and I don't mean to be, but I'm going to tell everybody, everybody that was down there, everybody in the community, everybody, why do the African-American, and this is not just for African-Americans, we got so many people coming down, they coming in from everywhere, China, they coming out of town, white, black, old, everything, positive, free events, free, free, we done got all this national media of what we've got going on here, and even with that, you come back to me and tell me, we can't give you but 10 years, and by the way, only up to $500,000. That's a slap in the face, not to me, to them thousands of people. So, I wanted something that would have a permanent, sustainable model. As the fund grows, it grows, because you're going to have to have new technology at some point, you're going to have to come in with new technology, won't be just dusting and sweeping, you're going to have to have some new technology you're going to have to bring in. This thing goes through all the seasons, even when it's the winter, we ain't even been through a winter yet. So, I was disappointed, because all of us have been negotiating and everything, and then I come in, and we, as soon as I show up, well, we got to have a CVB, as soon as I show up, well, we got to put a cap on your stuff- well, we got to have a C V B, soon as I show up, well, we gotta put a cap on your stuff and everybody else's stuff, I'm going with. Y'all getting full-time people in perpetuity, as long as they wanna stay. And this one thing, we're saying, and I even said, okay, if you wanna have a C V B, fine. But we don't need to cap the Black Music Walk of Fame, cause we don't know if we gonna have to bring new stuff. And I don't wanna depend on the next, I don't wanna do like the Bengals situation did, the homeowners. They get a contract forever and, and the people get a well if we have, if we have. You see how that has happened? So I want my stuff in writing. And I'm very upset about this, not cause of me. All these people that's been left out, left behind, ain't been, ain't, ain't, ain't had nothing going for them. Down on the banks, not one black-owned business. Come on. And all they ask for is, hey, as more people come, it helps with the Walk of Fame. So I'm not happy with this, and everybody said, and then ran down, let me go get two votes so we can outvote you, Alicia Reese. I'm telling the truth. I've been holding back. But I'm telling the truth, ran past me to get two votes to be against me. First thing they do, let me go get two votes. And I thought we were trying to negotiate and work together. But the final seconds, I'm down there with the holiday party, the final seconds, I gotta run to the hallway, well, we just can't do it, just do ten years, it's our board, I want every board. I don't care who the board, I'm sorry, I don't care who the board is. This should be done, just like the Bengals contract, it didn't matter who the board was for twenty years. You had to do it. And so that's where I'm, I was, uh, at the holiday cheer and spirit, but now I'm not, because I just think it's a slap in the face to so many people in this community, and we're not getting the equal deal that everybody else is. I'm not stopping C V B, whatever they wanna get, but on the other side, I don't feel like it should be. How we gonna cap it, we, we ain't even been through a whole year yet. We capping it. Ain't even been through winter yet. And I'm trying to do it with the people that are not from here, but who are in these hotel stays, who came for that particular weekend possibly, and getting some of that back. If I went in there and asked for ten percent of nine point six million dollars, I would've got more. I'm not even asking for the ten percent. So that's where I am, uh, I can't go to the administrator, cause this is a thing of us, of the board. But I just feel very, very disrespected on behalf of the citizens that I represent. We would like to make sure that this thing is gonna be permanent, like everything else down on the banks. So with that, I will open it up.
Well, thank you. Um, I, I must say, I, I feel like your interpretation of our budget negotiations is certainly not mine. Um, as our staffs have been together for the last few days negotiating a multitude of things. Um, and we all, uh, agreed, and we have a budget in front of us. Um, so that is simply not a fair characterization of how we have behaved during the budget negotiations. Secondly, um, I agree that we have built the Black Music Walk of Fame down on the banks, and we are obligated to maintain it. We have to maintain it, we have no choice but to maintain it. So the question is, what funds do you use to maintain it? Because it's a million dollars a year to maintain this facility. And so there was an, uh, uh, an offer or a recommendation, I don't, I don't even remember how long ago it was, but there was this idea that we take it from two different funds, one being the T O T, the transient occupancy tax, which is what you've been referring to. And the other one is the parking operations down on the banks. Both of them relevant to the Black Walk of Fame. Um, both of them could be used, and so the idea was to use both of them, uh, because there's, the, the, both of them fluctuate a little bit, but the T O T fluctuates the most. And so we had an idea to fund at least three hundred and fifty thousand out of the T O T and then split some of the, uh, T O T with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is the organization that promotes conventions and activities and economic development stuff that create room nights in the county. And so that organization has traditionally been funded through the T O T. They have given some money back in order to make the Convention Center stack work. Um, but that's not to say that they had that money necessarily to give. Um, they are, they are struggling and they will be struggling to maintain as the Convention Center goes down for a number of months and no, not a lot of revenue will be coming in. So we have to recognize the economic dynamics. So the idea was to make sure the Black Walk of Fame got the first three hundred and fifty thousand, because that is part of the, the stack for maintaining the Black Walk of Fame. And then we would take another three hundred and fifty whenever we got there, and that would go to the C V B. And then up to a million dollars in that fund, we would, that's seven hundred thousand. So the remainder, up to a million, we'd split fifty-fifty. And then after that, have a conversation about, and this would be a conversation we would obviously have down the road uh, in a number of years, to talk about, um, how that fund would be distributed. But the idea is that whatever is not funded in the T O T is funded in the parking operations so that the Black Music Walk of Fame will continue to be fully funded. So I don't understand, nor I just don't recognize the argument that we are not maintaining the Black Music Walk of Fame, because I will speak for myself, I will not speak for my colleagues. Um, I am committed to that. Um, there are two funding sources that will provide for that. And so I, I just, um, struggle with the idea that this commission's not dedicated to always fully funding a community asset that we all participated in and we all agreed to. Um, I for one, am not interested in having any assets that we have built, uh, whether it's during our tenure or somebody else's, um, lay waste. I mean, that, that doesn't make any sense. And so I just wanna be clear that I, um, will be supporting maintaining the Black Music Walk of Fame um, from these two different funds. And, uh, I, I will be happy to provide for the funding that's necessary. My understanding, it's about a million. I don't know if that will fluctuate in the future, but that's what I'm committed to doing.
Well, I wanna, uh, clarify a couple of things, cause that sounds good, what you were saying, but that's not totally the picture. When the Bengals got the stadium, there was a different commission here. I'm not interested in just this board supporting, cause this board is setting up things for future boards to support. And I'm interested in having a sustainable lifetime model, no matter who the board is, if I'm not sitting up here. And we don't get that, particularly with African-American projects. We always get temporary situations. And so my position is if we can go thirty million dollars for a tailgate space that's gonna be permanent, why can't we get some, we're gonna do a Bengal, we're doing the Bengals deals and the Reds deals on things that, no matter if we're here or not. We're doing, uh, the F C parking, no matter if we're here or not. Why can't we get that for the Walk of Fame? Now, let me tell you about the negotiations, cause you always mention my staff. And I wanna tell you that my staff works very, very hard. We thought we had a deal. Well, we came in and said, we're gonna compromise and not take the full hundred percent of the tot. We'll only take fifty percent of the tot. We thought we had a deal. I'm in, I'm in the bed, I ain't had no rest, that's why I'm upset. I've been up all night, back and forth with my, my aide who's been talking to your people. We walk in here today, we say, no, we got a cap on a million dollars. The cap was never there. Now, now we got a cap with five hundred thousand. The cap wasn't there, so I'm down here hosting the holiday party and got to run in the hallway, and then he's got to run in and we got presentations, Commissioner Dumas had a presentation, and then the next thing we know, it's changed. The deal was, it was gonna come from the tot. I was gonna compromise fifty percent for C V B, but no cap on the Black Music Walk of Fame. I'm not interested in ten years, I'm not interested if it's just this board sitting around here. I want the same deal that we're doing for these other projects, that don't matter who's up here, it's already funded. And we're looking at using the tot, which is the tourism dollars. And even if I, I could've went in and said, give me ten percent of what they brought last year. They brought in nine point six million. Ninety-eight percent African-American audience. I said, just give me ten percent of what's on there. But I didn't. So I, I wanna be clear, the negotiations went down when every time I bring something, you wanna tweak it and change it, and you gotta have this, and this is, this is disrespectful to the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Now, your stuff, you brought it, I didn't tweak it. I'm either for it or I ain't against it. I didn't come in here today, five minutes before the meeting, and try to change your stuff. But I'm gonna, this is gonna get out. I'm not gonna keep, I'm not gonna keep taking this mess. We had a deal. And the deal was the fifty percent, all the, all the chiefs of staff was there. I don't know exactly if Dumas was a part of it, we took it, I mean, if she was agreeing upon it, but we're taking it back because I had said, yeah, I wanna, I wanna be workable. I don't really believe the C V B should get it, but I'll be workable. So then you came with the C V B. Now, you done brought the C V B in on the Black Music Walk of Fame, uh, uh, a program versus a, uh, actual entity. And then I said, well, I'll still work with you, but now down to twelve fifty-five, and, and he already done wrote the, wrote the resolution. And everybody done went, and then your office runs down, I'm gonna get two votes on you. I mean, come on. The truth got to be told, and I'm gonna tell the truth. We can't have, we could've had a pleasant budget if you would've not came in and tried to cap the Black Music Walk of Fame. We're saying as it grows, as they bring more people, it goes to the Walk of Fame. It says that whether you're here, I'm here, Dumas here, or the next group is here. It keeps the Walk of Fame permanent. Now, I'm not gonna play no games with this. I'll play some games with a couple of your little things, but we ain't playing no games with this. If you wouldn't have touched it, it wasn't Dumas' office, was not the one that came in and said she wanted to cap it. Now, maybe she agreed, but she wasn't the one presented it, and I didn't get the presentation till I'm down here serving everybody food and eating and having a good time. I couldn't even have a good time, cause I got to go out the office, you don't know what you gonna do. We down to twelve fifty-five and, I don't know, y'all, sometimes y'all act like Jeff Aludo is the next commissioner. I ain't the commissioner, he's the commissioner. He done already got it typed up. Now, come on, don't talk about my staff. I know exactly what he's saying, cause I'm telling him what to say. And I was up all night, we have had no rest. And to come in here at the last minute, and it doesn't even mean that much, to cap off the Black Music Walk of Fame. We, I want something where they ain't got to come back to this commission. It is already in there and it's automatic and it can keep growing. That's where we got the difference. So don't come in here and try to like, oh, we trying to work together now. No, I, I take it as a stab in the back. If I come in here at twelve fifty-five and, and y'all to come in and tell me, no, and you already got the resolution typed up. How'd you type up that quick? At twelve fifty-five, I got the information. Well, we got the two votes, we gonna cap it off. If I'd have had it, I had this place packed with the Black Music Walk of Fame. And to let them see face to face who the people who ain't really for them. I don't want a ten-year deal, we want a permanent deal.
So out of line, Commissioner.
No, you're out of line, what you just did at twelve fifty-five, and we meet at one o'clock.
So there, there, there has been a cap discussed over a number of days. I don't, I don't know why that hasn't been translated.
No, it was translated.
But the other thing, the, well, and my staff-
And it wasn't, no, your staff was told, we, your staff on the cap. Your staff, cause you wanna, your staff, my staff, on this cap, we had a deal, not on the cap, we had a deal on the fifty-fifty. You come back and he said, I gotta wait for her, she went to bed. I gotta wait for her, she's in her office. You in your office and come back, she's not going for it. And then he ran down the hall and then came back to Dumas' office, and then said, we got it.
Okay.
No, we need to tell the truth on this, cause this is the real stuff.
Okay, so that is not the real stuff. And, um, so, and remember, the idea of the cap is it, it, when the, uh, Black Walk of Fame is at five hundred thousand and the C V B is at five hundred thousand, we need to evaluate not only the Black Music Walk of Fame, but the C V B. Because there, there is this money, and, and the Black Music Walk of Fame, the remainder, no matter what it is, is gonna be picked up under the parking operations. The C V B though is part of that too, and by, by the time we reach, uh, a million, we might have other priorities that we wanna fund as a commission. Again, this is a number of years down the road, but, um, I, I take great offense to the way you characterize these negotiations. Um, I, I don't generally tell people when I'm in bed, by the way, so, um, I, I really don't appreciate, um, you making this personal. But, you know, negotiations are difficult, we are fully funding-
Let me be clear, it's not personal, you're, you always talk about not personal, but it must be personal that you couldn't do fifty-fifty. You brought in the Convention and Visitor Bureau.
It is fifty-fifty.
I brought up what your, your staff told us, cause you bringing up my staff. Now, let me just be clear. You always try to act like you're the one, that I was the one compromising. I came in here and said, listen, the Black Music Walk of Fame, I wanna go restricted fund so it doesn't take out of people's pockets. No property taxes.
And we've done that.
And I came up with that. But then Jeff came back and said, we can't use all of it, if, you know, he didn't say we can't. If we used all of it, we couldn't do other projects. So I came back and said, okay, well, let's just do fifty percent. Then you came in and brought in the C V B, who has eight million dollars a year, eleven million dollars in their reserve, and you came in and said, C V B, and I said, oh, man, I don't know about that, cause they got a lot of money, and what about these other projects? But okay, I'm gonna be compromising. Let's go with that. So I thought that was the end of it. That wasn't enough. No, you had to come in and now you wanna cap the Black Music Walk of Fame. If you wanna cap C V B, I'd say, fine.
The cap was always part of the conversation.
It was never part of the conversation.
Okay, well, I, I don't-
That's why I don't like them behind-the-scenes stuff.
And we're not able to sit together and have this conversation.
Well, I'm putting it out in the public now. Why would you cap the Black Music Walk of Fame and that's the funding source? Why do, what do you have against the Black Music Walk of Fame getting a twenty and a lifetime deal like these other entities?
There is a lifetime deal, because the other fund will pick up the remainder. It is going to be fully funded, I'm committed to that. I mean, we did this together, and so I am fully committed to maintaining the Black Walk of Fame to whatever degree it needs to be funded through these two funds. And when one fund doesn't, and, and the, the, or the first fund, the T O T, at three fifty, isn't gonna be near enough to cover the maintenance of the Black Music Walk of Fame, we're gonna have to go to the parking operations for I don't know how many years. So it will be fully funded, it's just a matter of which fund it comes out of.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, just a, a few comments. Um, I was thinking about, uh, what a great opportunity the Black Music Walk of Fame is. Um, that when you came to the board, you brought up the fact that it was a great idea, and I still agree that it's a great idea, it's a beautiful area. Uh, it's not a black project, but it's a Hamlin County project that exposes black musicians. Um, and as we know, people come from all over. Um, I hear about it, you know, it's gonna get out, it's gonna get out, and that's, that's great. We're, we're the mouthpiece of the people. But I just wanna make sure that when things get out and we tell the truth, and we tell nothing but the total truth. And what I mean by that, we had a half and, half an acre to work with. That's all we had. So we built this beautiful black Walk of Fame. Um, we got together and, uh, we said on this resolution, that three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, was gonna go toward maintenance of the Black Music Walk of Fame. That's not a drop in the bucket. Three hundred and fifty thousand is not a drop in the bucket. The suggestion was made, uh, by you, Madam Chair, that we'd look at the T O T. We said, okay, let's do it, and we did it. There's a lot of great things that came out of this, and I can understand the passion of both of you, and you're, and you want not to have a cap and all of that. But I'm thinking about all the great things that have come out of it. Um, yeah, the five hundred thousand dollar cap, we don't know, that may not, uh, be enough, but as was said earlier, we're gonna have to discuss it and look at additional funding if, if necessary for both, the Cincinnati Visitors Bureau and the Black Walk of Fame. Um, and as we develop, um, the Walk, Walk of Fame, even though this money is for maintenance, um, we may need more. Um, I'm agreement, in agreement with a cap for both, and that we assess how much more money we need. So when we go out and we tell the truth, we need to let people know three hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be going toward the maintenance of the, the Black Walk of Fame, and is not temporary, it's a permanent fixture, uh, that will be taken care of. And then I heard something a while ago, uh, during this discussion, uh, that people get together and vote against, and, vote against people. Um, and I just want to let the people know, I don't vote against people, I vote for or against issues. So that is not in my M O, uh, that's not how I do it, and that is not how it's done. I look at the issue, I look at the, the project and, um, in my best, uh, ability to make a decision what I think is best for the county. And as I said, there is no limit. Um, it goes up to five hundred thousand, but we realize that, man, we need new electronics or new, whatever we need down there, new, we'll be able to do it. And I, I heard the argument about, well, that's good, because we're here. Uh, but when the other commissioners come, and they would be a little out of their mind to have such a beautiful fixture down there and let it be down there rusting. or not changing the screens and all of that. Um, but I'm in agreement with, uh, 350,000, uh, for maintenance for the Walk of Fame, and then, um, putting the cap on it for, uh, both entities, and then move forward, and as we need more, if we need more, that we vote on that at that time.
I wanted to highlight, I appreciate the 350,000, but you also given, and it's almost like sometimes with African Americans, we're doing 350,000. We do $2 million for the Port Authority, every budget, including this one that's gonna be coming up. So when you look at that for your, just so you understand, uh, we're doing $30 million for garages. We, we did $71 million for garages down on the banks. So we started looking at those numbers. Um, 350,000, we just voted for 39 million, just today. 39 million dollars. For what? Upgrades of the stadium. And that wasn't the tearing down the stadium, that's just putting in some seats and uh, dusting and doing some AV work. We did 39 million. There, nobody, nobody jumped up and said, we gotta put a cap on it. We need to go lower. But when it comes to, we gotta get our mindsets. That's where I'm at. My mindset is different. I want one set of rules. And we came down here, you wanna put a cap on the Black Music Walk of Fame, and say, come back to us. We did not put a cap on the Bengals. We put 39 million dollars just, and that don't include all the other stuff we vote on every week. And nobody said nothing about, we need to cap them. In fact, they were praised. We were praising it. Oh, 39 million dollars for upgrades. And so I am gonna speak out, and we are gonna tell the truth, but we gonna run these numbers. 350,000 dollars by itself sound like a lot, but when you put it to 39 million dollars, we just did uh, for some upkeep over at the Bengals stadium, and you look at 71 million dollars for garages, and you look at 200 million dollars out of the same fund we getting ready to do, to do some upgrades at Covetius Center. I mean, come on now. And I don't know why it was, you know, and the thing is, I don't think it's personal. What's personal is I'm here for the people, and they think it's personal. They think it's personal. Why can't we get one set of rules? So when I come in, um, I'm arguing for them, 'cause all of us get the same checks, no matter what we do. We come in here, we get the same check. So it doesn't, it's not hurting me, 'cause we all got the same check. What's hurting is I can't sit down here and see 39 million dollars just a few minutes ago with all the TV cameras here for upgrades of the Bengals, and that's not even with the lease, and that's not the real big stuff that's gotta get fixed. And then we're gonna look at the Walk of Fame, and the reason we did 39 million dollars with the Bengals, because they have a contract. They didn't have to come to, they not begging, they got, at, at the end of the day, they can go to, they can go to court. They got a contract. And so what we don't have for the homeowners is a contract, so that mean all of us who weren't here at that time, we get to look at it, well, I don't think we have enough. I can't go 30, let's go 12. I don't want another group doing that to the Black Music Walk of Fame. I want it equal in writing. But here we are comparing the Black Music Walk of Fame to a Covetius Visitors Bureau that's a program, and believe me, I was the deputy director of tourism, so I'm all for tourism. But they got 8 million dollars every year, they get 11 million dollars in the, in the reserve, and we gonna, we gonna penalize the Black Music Walk of Fame, because we don't want them to go too high. But we didn't do it with 39 mil, I can't even have that conversation. 350,000 dollars, y'all should be thankful. 39 million dollars, go ahead. So that's where I get frustrated, and I just don't understand something as simple. I, I asked for a simple request. I said, hey, can we get it out of the tie? Minimum 350, that ain't the maximum, minimum 350. And as more people come, like the festival and this, we can go up. CVB, I'm willing to compromise, and really don't think they should be in there, 'cause they got 11 million dollars in reserve, they got 8 million dollars a year. They gonna give away 3 million dollars, they gonna get it repaid, but I'm willing to go along with it, but why, why the Black Music Walk of Fame gotta get capped now? For, you know, well, and come back to us, and come, it won't be, it might not be no us in 10, 20 years. I want the next us. That when they come in, I want it to be just like the Bengals. You tied to the contract. 'Cause they'll say, well, we weren't here. I don't know what Reese said, I don't know what Dumas said, I don't know what, what Dre House said. So that's why I'm trying to do that. And we're getting ready to vote on 200 million dollars for the Covetius Center out of there. And that's gonna be lifetime of paying it back or what have you. So we got 200 million there. Why can't we have something that doesn't have the cap on it? So now we know that this is a permanent, it's not the only stream, 'cause as you indicated, there's others. But if we do better, if we get more people, then the Walk of Fame, you don't have to worry about it. It is, it is funded, and we can move to something else. That's what, so we don't have this again. I don't want to do this again. See, every time we do something, I gotta do this again, and we gotta go back and forth, but when we vote for stuff in the budget for some of the other things, I don't gotta see you no more. We ain't gonna see them no more with that 39 million. They gone. I want something that we don't, I don't wanna do this no more. I wanna have my negotiation like, yeah, once it's done, it can move on. And that's what I was trying to do.
I had a, just a couple more comments. I don't think we can compare, uh, the Black Walk of Fame cost, uh, for maintenance. We can't compare it to the stadium, uh, a huge stadium, the 30 million or more that we have to put in. So we're comparing, to me, apples and oranges. We really don't know what the maintenance costs will be. So because of that, I think we need to put in some money and then assess it. And I, I just wanna make it clear, 'cause, um, I'm black too, if anybody didn't notice. I would not care if it was a white, um, Walk of Fame, and we were asking for money. And I would say at the same time, for me, I would put a cap on it. And so it has nothing to do with black folks and black projects, and it doesn't, I'm, I'm not going there, and other people can go there. It's a Hamilton County project that should've happened a long time ago. Um, but my opinion is that we need to cap until we assess, uh, what we're doing and what is needed. And we can't compare a Black Walk of Fame to the renovation of a, of a complete stadium. That's all.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, yeah, I'm just gonna say that, um, I'm not talking about the color we are, I'm talking about a mindset. And the mindset is.
You're talking about what?
I'm talking about a mindset, not aesthetics. But what I'm saying is, when we have these projects, um, I'm different. Maybe I come, I come out of civil rights, I've been fighting for civil rights and equal rights, and what I don't see, one set of rules. Yes, it's not the same in terms of money, but it's the same in terms of the entity. We're Hamilton County, we're funding both. It's not the same in terms of size, but it's same, it is the same in terms of the process. We had to vote on the money for that as well. I'm trying to make a sustainable model, so it never, we don't have to come and take it, the stuff out of the general fund. That's what I'm trying to do. And I'm saying, we got to, look, demographics do matter. Demographics does matter. And when we look at a, 'cause anybody else would come down with their numbers. When you look at just one thing that comes every year, and it brought in 9.6 million dollars last year, we can't ignore that. We just can't ignore it. And now, so I, I'm, I'm, you know, everybody has their own journeys. And my journey's has always been fighting for one set of rules. So I've been doing it since I was seven years old. I've been doing it. I've been doing it as a president of Ohio Legislative Black Caucus, I've been doing it. I've been doing it down at Grambling State HBCU. I've been doing it. And I'm talking about one set of rules. We had the same process. It's not the same amount, but one needs fix up, the other one's gonna need fix up. We approved one for 39 million dollars, and we said it was a wonderful thing. We come up here, we wanna put a cap on something, and I just don't understand why. Why does this have to have a cap? We ain't, but, yes, CVB got a cap, 'cause you, they already getting 8 million dollars. They already got 11 million dollars. You capping just this little part. They not getting capped over on the 200 million dollars to get a Covetius Center. They're getting a lot of other things. And I'm just saying, we collect diverse taxes, and it's time that these taxes come back to the people that's putting the taxes out there. No more, well, excuses. And I'm going beyond us. I want something, this thing should be around way beyond our time, and, and grow and be bigger. But I don't wanna put it on the next commission. I wanna put it in place now, like the last commission put in place now for the, for the stadium. So that's where I'm coming from. And the passion I got ain't my pa, it's the passion of people out here in the streets. The, the citizens, and it's not just African Americans. I've been fighting for homeowners the same way. And I get resistance. I've been fighting for veterans in the same way. I'm getting resistance. So it's not about black or white, whether you, whether you in the military, whether you're a music artist. I'm gonna fight for what I think is right. And I came down here to do it different. And that's, you know, I, I, I thought I found the funding source, and, you know, now I get challenged on the funding source. When y'all find funding sources, I, I typically go along with it, and that's where we have a problem. I'm not here to say no personal stuff in this. If it was personal, I wouldn't care. I'm done down here for BFFs. I'm down here to get some stuff done for the people. So I'm not here about the personal, what you feel about me. But I just didn't understand, I thought we had, I thought we were good, until 1255. So that's my argument.
So, um, in light of some of what's been said, I, it, it does remind me that this, uh, funding for the Black Music Walk of Fame is a new item. And so it, because it occurs to me as we talk about different things that prior commissions have done, and things that this commission has done, um, and when suggested that we take some of the funding for the maintenance of Black Music Walk of Fame out of the TOT, we said yes. When it was suggested to be 50%, we said yes. Uh, we put a cap on it, so we can review it after a million dollars are in that fund for both the CVB and the Black Music Walk of Fame to evaluate. So, you know, we, we've said yes to this idea, and are gonna pick up the rest of the cost somewhere else. So I, um, it's, you know, we, we can revisit this as we go. Um, I think, you know, we, the, the TOT is an appropriate source, and, and that's where part of the funding's coming from. So with that, I'm gonna move that we approve of by leave number 13.
Second.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yep.
Commissioner Summer Jimmick?
Yes.
Alright, we're gonna go to the budget by leave.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll just, uh, introduce this item briefly. Uh, this is, if you can find it here, this is, uh, by leave number 12, uh, in your packet. This is resolution number 46. Also in your packet, this establishes a 1.32 billion dollar appropriations to defray public expenses for Hamilton County. Uh, this is, the, the all funds budget is made up of approximately 396.1 million in general fund, and the general fund budget, 922.1 million, uh, restricted fund budget. Uh, just basically, I'm just gonna reiterate what I've said, uh, in the three public hearings. Uh, I think this is a, a good, solid budget. It addresses the board's policy objectives. It, it addresses the mandated services as required by the Ohio Revised Code. Um, it hits everything from public safety to social services, environment, and infrastructure. Uh, it, uh, addresses our, our critical staffing issues. Um, and I think it addresses the board's policy objectives as the county has become consistently more active uh, in the community across all of these, across all of these areas. So, uh, I've given three, um, pretty lengthy presentations at, at our, at our past, uh, budget hearings, so I'm not gonna go into any more than that, other than, uh, Commissioners, um, if you would like, I could read through the policy items that are in here. If you don't want me to, we can, uh, just move ahead with, uh, the board comments in consideration of the budget. Uh, but there are, uh, there are several, uh, items, uh, that the board had asked over the course of this time to make sure it was, uh, in the budget or reflected in the budget. So we've attempted to capture as many of those, uh, in there as possible. If we don't wanna, if you don't want me to recite them, I, I don't have to, but if you want me to, I'd be happy to walk through them, Commissioner.
Oh, let's go to the, uh, let's go to the comments, and we can highlight, everybody can highlight the ones they want to, or their overall statement. Uh, Vice President Dre House.
Yes, yeah, I, happy to do that, um, 'cause we all, as you say, negotiated through, and everyone um, got some priorities realized here in this budget. So, um, having done a couple of budgets in the past, both at the State House and here at the County Commission, um, I always hearken back to the Joe Biden quote, "Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." So the budget is our list of priorities. It reflects, um, what we have heard from the citizens of the county. It reflects the priorities of those citizens, and so I am very pleased with the budget. Um, I, the process was a good one. We heard from the different departments. I wanna thank them for coming in, making budget presentations, and allowing us to understand, because I think in almost every case, maybe but one, each of the departments asked for an increase in their budgets, which is not uncommon, but it is helpful to have them articulate what that increase is for. And so most of them, I think maybe without exception, talked about wage adjustments. Well, the County Commission did wage adjustments. We did a competitive wage study. We understood that some of our employees were not within, uh, uh, competitive range, uh, with other counties, other organizations, other communities. And so we did that adjustment to make sure we can recruit and retain individuals to work at the county, to serve the citizens of the county. So these other departments then, um, not, maybe didn't follow suit, but they did the same thing. And so I think we need to celebrate that, um, we are all kind of on track to dignify the work of the employees that work for the county, and, um, and recognize that that's some of what these wage adjustments, or, or rather, the, um, increase in the budgets were for, and try to, you know, incorporate that into the thinking as we try to balance the budget. Um, we heard from citizens, we heard from, about small event grant, we heard about some economic development grants. Um, so I appreciate the comments from the community members that came forward, but we ended up with a 40 million dollar gap. Um, no small, uh, thing to close a 40 million dollar gap. That's higher than usual. And so I wanna say a big thank you to Jeff Aludo, John Brugan, and the budget staff, and there are many of them, um, who interact with all these departments, to try to go back to those departments and say, 40 million dollars is a lot to close. What can we do to try to, you know, reevaluate your budget? Um, be, be true to what you're trying to accomplish, but, but pare back a little bit, and we, we, and, and I should say they, um, were able to close that gap. And so I am very grateful for all of the work that the staff did to make that happen. So this budget is a healthy, it's structurally balanced, uh, moving forward, and it puts the county in a strong financial position. We generally, uh, financial analysts will tell you to do like a 15 or 14% reserve, uh, which is fiscally prudent. We are at 14.4, so I think we're right within that range, and I'm, I'm grateful that we're always going to be paying attention to that. Uh, and then, then we talked about some of the priorities that this commission wanted to see, and some of them were more relative to specific offices, but some of them were broad and, and pervaded all of our offices. And so the one, uh, related to workforce, I think was one of those, where we knew we wanted to, um, provide for, um, a COLA, for a cost of living increase, but also do something related to merit. And so we ended up with a 3% cost of living increase. We've got a 5%, a 0.5% for merit. And then we've got a one-time bonus for merit, uh, of 1% that will be, as I said, one-time, so not needed to be in future budgets, but rather just in this one, to make sure that we are incentivizing that good work and, and people um, going above and beyond, uh, what their job description says they should do. Um, in addition to that, we're building on, uh, the tuition reimbursement, the parental leave policy that we put in place. Um, and we are aggressively pursuing childcare options. We've been talking about this for a while. I think we're getting a lot closer um, than we have been. I know it's complicated. I've heard from a lot of different organizations, including other counties, that are really struggling with providing childcare to their employees, and we are no different. And so I hope within the, uh, next few months, we have some resolution to that. And I do think that's kind of the, from my vantage point, the last thing where we say we value our employees and we wanna make it an attractive place to work for county employees. Uh, we are also doing, um, something related to building out a 911 and EMA facility, so that those, um, organizations, especially the 911 operators, have, uh, a building that they're working in that is conducive to the work, uh, because it's very, very stressful work. And so, uh, we are building on some past investments and, um, creating some new investments. The other major priority from where I sit is related to economic development and the partnerships we have with the 49 jurisdictions throughout Hamilton County. And they show up in the revitalization grant. Uh, we've done many, many projects, they're catalytic projects in many communities throughout the county, such as Chiviet, Woodlawn, Wyoming, North Bend, Lachland, uh, you name it. We've tried to, uh, partner with these communities to make sure that if they see something that can be catalytic in their community. that can be catalytic in their community, they are able to invest in that. And we are partners in that investment. The large event grant is another one, the impact grant, the small event grant. We have done quite a bit of outward-facing work to make sure that this partnership that we have with these jurisdictions is very robust. And in addition to that, we've got a couple new agreements coming online where the sheriff's office is going to be partnering with some of the Western jurisdictions to provide patrol services in areas that they have not before. And we're also looking at trying to convene conversations about a joint fire district. Not really our purview, but we, as the county, can be conveners to try to help those jurisdictions figure out how they can afford both the police and fire organizations in their communities. So again, building, from my vantage point, building on some past investments. And so then there are other things, and Jeff, you alluded to this, some of the more specific priorities that are showing up in this budget. So the Commission on Women and Girls will be at full capacity in this budget. There is, there are a couple of items related to veterans. I'm not going to speak to the ones, Commissioner Reese, that you have been championing. I simply speak to the one that I've been talking about, which is the $20,000 to fund a pilot program and partnership with Sorda for no-cost bus passes for veterans' transportation to and from medical appointments, whether those are to doctor's appointments or to the VA. We are partnering with Sorda. They have offered to wrap a couple of their vehicles to promote this to make sure that the veterans in Hamilton County know that they ride for free on Metro, thanks to, in part to the VSC, in part to the county, to doctor's appointments and to the VA. The $20,000 is a guess. We've never done this before. And so we don't know with that kind of marketing, how many veterans will take advantage of the program. And so that is the best guess. And so that is being funded through the budget. One other thing, and it's not budget-related, but it is on the same conversation with veterans. House Bill 69 is going, well, I guess it is not, no longer going through legislature because they ended last night, but it is still being kicked around at the State House. This is the bill that talks about the makeup of the Veteran Services Commission Board. It's something that we heard when we had the veterans in, talking about some of their concerns. And it allows for younger members, or rather, young people who have been part of conflicts or wars post 9/11 to participate on that board. And so I've offered an amendment to that by way of the sponsor to say, instead of replacing somebody in the initial five, just add two more people and make it seven. And then you can include two of the younger people that desire to serve on this commission. I've talked to Brian Stewart, the author of the bill. I've talked in a bipartisan way to Democrats and Republicans. Don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but anyway, making some best efforts to try to address some of the concerns we heard here in Hamilton County. We, and I know this is a shared priority. I am concerned about the rate of progress on the animal shelter. And so this budget seeks to acquire property for the development and construction of a new animal shelter, or at least do something that makes our current shelter adequate. I'm hoping it will be the former rather than the latter. But I hear about this quite a bit in my office, related to what's going on in the animal shelter related to dogs. And so I'm anxious to see that move forward. There is another proposition in here related to development of grant support housing needs for children associated with victims of domestic violence. This is something that a number of us have talked about, related to some of the organizations in our community that deal with victims of domestic violence and the impact to the women and the kids that are in that situation. And so there are many organizations, or, well, I shouldn't say many. There are some organizations in the county that provide for this population, the YWCA for one. And so this idea here is to provide some funding for those kids and those families that are in that circumstance and make sure they've got safe places to go. And that would be through the Children's Services Levy because it has an impact to kids. There's another piece in here. Again, this talks about the childcare for county employees. And then, you know, not part of so much the negotiations, but rather part of what was, it's been discussed over the year. And I, you know, as I was looking through some of the priorities, I was reminded that there are some really top priorities in this budget that we haven't talked about recently, so I'm just going to call them out real quickly. You know, the regional safety complex is in this budget. And the last money in for that, that project is moving forward. There are justice center improvements in this budget, those related to windows and locks and elevators. The convention center district is in this budget. The expansion of divert, again, to provide support for families in the throes of domestic violence. There's money against the reserve for bike trails. And there's money for affordable housing in this budget. So I want to say that we've accomplished a lot over the year. This is, this is a big deal. And there are many, many big things that are happening in this budget. And so I am in favor of the budget because it continues to invest in the important services in the county and the workforce of the county. It maintains a healthy reserve, and it also allows the county to do big things. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. I'm not going to itemize each area. Most of it has been spoken about. But if you did not hear me speak out against something that's in the budget, I'm good with it. This is a large budget, of course. We serve over 825,000-plus people, so it has to be a large budget. And I said, we serve, we have to make sure that every person, every entity is being served. So that's why it's such a large budget. We had three public hearings, as was said earlier, and one in the evening. And we had some people come out, some sent emails. So we did reach out to the public. And I want to thank all the chiefs of staff. I've heard the discussion as my chief of staff came back and talked to me about what issues were coming up. And I just want to thank all the chiefs of staff for all their hard work in trying to get a consensus among the commissioners. They work hard and you did a good job. So my priorities were really four priorities as it relates to this budget. I'm happy that our board priorities were incorporated in this budget. The new initiatives that we started due to ARPA, I was just hoping that we would be able to sustain those, and we have been able to sustain those. And of course, a balanced budget. And lastly, to have a decent reserve in our budget in case any other emergencies come. So I'm very happy with the budget itself and the process that we went through to come to this budget. That's all I have.
Thank you. The process started with each of us putting together what we thought, in addition to what the administrator brought forward. I think we had a good framework to start from. We did hear from each of the departments. And it was good they put in everything that they would like to have, even though we couldn't do all those things, but it gave us a chance to be able to look at some things we may not have been aware of. We might say, oh, we want to keep this, or we want to keep that. So I do want to thank for the, thank you for the process. Want to thank Mr. Brugan, who had to bring everybody together and look at all those numbers. He told them, have a wish list, and then he came back and said, okay, here are some scissors we got to cut. So I want to thank him and his team, of course, Mr. Aludo and his entire staff. And I will have to say that this budget does have a lot of great things in it. It is a good budget. I'm going to continue to push the envelope. I'm not going to stop. And a lot of times in pushing the envelope, some of the things were implemented. Some of the things we recommended, recommended last time, didn't get completely implemented, but will be implemented this time, as well as sustainability. Economic development, I wanted to highlight one of the components. We're doing a lot in economic development countywide, and we're starting to see it. We understand that we must invest in villages, townships and small cities to make sure that we have a strong Hamilton County. I'm very excited. We have an Office of Small Business, and we kind of got our toes wet this year with the big small business day. We realized there were a lot of people involved. We are expanding that Office of Small Business. We will be returning with the Small Business Day, but we also have funding in there for storefronts. So a lot of our communities have empty storefronts and need help with the facades and those kind of things. I think it's important that we really strive to be the number one county for small businesses. And I want us to continue, and I think this budget allows us to continue with that framework. Also, wanted to highlight senior citizens. We were able to have a $1 million fund for senior citizens and now continue that to help with home repairs and possibly utilities. But we have something specific for seniors, and we'll be able to work with Council on Aging to implement. It was very popular, it was used, and we do appreciate it. Safety is in this budget. Our sheriff presented us a budget with safety, and that's in here. It was mentioned, the Regional Safety Complex, formerly known as the Gun Range in the Lincoln Heights, Evendale area, owned by the city of Cincinnati. The reason I say that name now, I know we said we're not going to use that name, but I just want people to know that's what we're talking about. And that's a huge, huge deal that we have in the budget of 70-plus years. We're finally going to get it done. So I'm looking forward, hopefully, 2024, we'll have some shovels in the ground very, very soon. But the money is there. There's no longer a gap. Also, was mentioned affordable housing. My position stays. We've got, we've invested in this budget for new affordable housing, but I also want us to be cognizant of helping people stay in the house they already have. That's also a part of affordable housing. So I will continue to push for that, but we do still have some funds, I believe, left in there for people with mortgage assistance. So looking forward to getting that information out. As it relates to veterans, I think all of us are very concerned and frustrated about what's going on, what has been going on and brought to our attention regarding the Veterans Affairs that we don't have control over. And it makes it really tough. And so all of us have been looking, whether it was writing to the state that Vice President Dreehouse has done, or Commissioner Dumas, who was asked for Judge Wagner to come forward, which we did have come forward, or whether it's ideas of, as Vice President Dreehouse mentioned, about having some transportation. It's known I wanted to have vans, but we can't do it because they got to ask for the vans. So the next really best thing is now you can have the buses, but now you don't have to pay for them where you would have to pay for them before. The other thing, I believe in this budget, and I hope, I believe it's true, Mr. Aludo, we ask for you to put the maximum of what they ask for is in this budget, the veterans. What they ask for is what's in here.
Or for veterans, yes, so their request is in here, yes.
Their request. So, you know, we didn't cut, we didn't trim. What they ask for is in this budget. We want to ask for more, but we did not cut anything, which would give them a little bit more than they had last year in this budget. We also, I'm excited that we are looking toward having a Veterans Resource Day at PayCorps, and we can partner with Pa Von, who's our clerk, who's also working on something. He sent me an email, like to work together on it. But we put some funding toward it. And so no veteran, if we can help it, we'll put it out. No veteran will feel like they don't know what's going on. They'll be able to come to this event. They'll be able to sign up for the different services, not just with Veteran Services, but VA and disabled veteran, and do our job as far as getting that word out. So I'm thankful that that is in the budget marked at $200,000. So that's additional money for veterans. In addition to that, it was already talked about, the childcare that we're looking into, parking that we're looking into, and those kind of things that we're looking into. But I think the most important thing about this budget is the diversification. Our county is diversified. We got villages, we got townships, we got cities. And we have put something in here for everyone to be able to participate. If you are village, we're not leaving you behind. If you are a small city, you're not being ignored. If you are township, we're not turning our heads because you're the township. We're bringing everybody together as one Hamilton County. And so you could find something in this budget that we believe assists you in helping to move our county forward. So we're excited about this. I think we've leveraged very good our ARPA dollars. I think we're one of the best counties in leveraging our ARPA. I've talked to a lot of other counties. And they're nice, but they're not leveraging like we've been leveraging. We've leveraged, we've been diverse. The 513 relief bus, I'm excited for it to continue and to expand into other medical services and partnerships. And so we're excited to be back on the road with mobile services of Hamilton County and taking it to every zip code in the county. So because of all of those things, and more things that are in here, I support this budget. Of course, I'm always going to be pushing. I'm going to keep pushing. But I do support this budget. I already talked about the youth sports. It's in here because we didn't get to finish it this year, but it'll roll over into, I think, January, February, we should have some report back. But we, I encourage you to go to the survey. We even, we even got surveys out, trying to get your input from the surveys. I'm excited that this budget also takes in our youth. Very excited, the Office of Youth, 26,000 youth have been serviced, that's huge. And Commissioner Dumas, your programs and having the youth today, and these youth are getting scholarships. This is the kind of stuff that we, that we like to see. So I'm excited. We've got a lot of ribbon cuttings we've done already on affordable housing. And I know there's more to come on affordable housing and other positive things from our budget. So with that, I'd like to call for a, make a motion to approve the budget.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
All right, we got a budget. Now the lights get to stay on, y'all. Okay, we got a couple other by leaves. I would like to bring by leave number eight. Deontay Morris, he's been an intern for us. And now Deontay is going to move up from intern to part-time with our office. And so I would like to put this forward, by leave number eight.
I will happily second passing by leave number eight.
Commissioner?
Oh.
Oh, you second.
Did I say, yo, she seconded. I put a motion. I said by leave number eight.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. I just was waiting to say absolutely. Since I'm last, I didn't get it to you.
I'm sure he appreciates it for the holidays. He appreciates it. Okay, then we have by leave number, I'm going to go back to the regular by leaves because we got a lot of them. Okay, by leave number one.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll try to roll through these fairly quickly. Let me know if you have any questions. By leave number one in your packet is resolution authorizing the administrator to enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners and the United Way of Greater Cincinnati. This is for $1.5 million. This is the allocation of funding to the United Way to administer the county's ARPA-funded Wi-Fi grants. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'll open it up for questions. Vice President Dreehouse?
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. By leave number two, this is resolution number 43, studying the compensation level for the Veteran Services Commission. This is a requirement of the Ohio Revised Code, Section 5901.04. The administration recommends approval.
Okay, I'll open up for any questions.
Nope.
Questions?
No questions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. By leave number three is a resolution authorizing the administrator to enter into an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and activities beyond the classroom for $220,000. This is support services and reimbursements for the ARPA-funded Inspire Program. This is support services and reimbursements for the ARPA-funded Inspire Program. There's $200,000 in here for the reimbursement of purchases and a 10%, a cap of 10% administration fee. The administration recommends approval. I believe Sarah Adams is around, if anyone has any questions.
Okay, Vice President Dreehouse, any questions? Commissioner Dumis?
No questions, I'm just really excited about the opportunity to be able to expand the program more, so, thank you.
Awesome. I make a motion to approve by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item by leave four is budget adjustment number 36. This is for several items. This is sheriff, end-of-year sheriff payroll to cover a general fund payroll shortfall in the sheriff's office. These are for county facilities projects related to the care pods at the Justice Center. There are Hillcrest, sorry, there are renovation, the design fees for Hillcrest in here as well at $380,000. There are senior services, an increase in home health needs and transportation services. There's also several engineering projects in here, hillside, road rehabilitation. There is the Fields Erdel McCollie Road improvements and Fields Erdel resurfacing in Sims Township. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions, Vice President Dreehouse? Commissioner Dumis?
No questions.
I'll make a motion to approve by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number five is resolution number 44. These are compensation adjustments to election precinct officials. This is under the Revised Code. There must be agreement between the Board of Elections and the Board of County Commissioners. This just adjusts the rate of pay for the precinct officials, what they get for their daily work at the, during the election cycle. The administration recommends approval.
Okay, I just wanted to highlight this because our precinct executives and officials do a great job with the campaigns, making sure our election is ran without a glitch, and so I'm happy to see this. Vice President Dreehouse?
I will echo that and thank the folks that are willing to work these very long days at the polling places. We could not run elections without them, so I am also glad to see this item.
Commissioner Dumis?
Much-needed compensation.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve by leave five.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number six, this is resolution number 45. This authorizes a contract with the Cincinnati Animal Care for Animal Services at $3.66 million. This is a contract renewal for, renewal for 2024. This will likely be amended. I know the Budget Office and Cincinnati Animal Cares are still in discussions over the use, the appropriate use of balances in that fund, as well as costs and cost increases for 2024. So there will likely be a revisitation of this in '24, but this at least establishes the base level contract for Cincinnati Animal Cares for 2024.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion. Vice President Dreehouse?
So I do have a question. So the term of this is for how long?
This is a year, annual contract for Cincinnati Animal Care.
And do, so we will see this then next year again?
Yeah, and you will see it early in 2024, because, like I said, there are some, still some discussions over the necessary budget for Cincinnati Animal Cares and the use of balances, et cetera. So we will be bringing this back probably early in January for the board.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dumis?
Well, I'm glad to see this, because we asked for help in the state for doggies, and dogs don't come out on the top often in the state, but we're able to supplement this, so I'm really happy about this.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve by leave six.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number seven is a resolution approving a mini planning grant between the village of, the county and the Village of North Bend. This is for William Henry Harrison Riverfront Park for $35,000. The administration recommends approval.
I'll open it up for questions.
No questions.
No questions.
I'll make a motion to approve by leave number nine.
Number seven.
Oh, seven, I'm sorry, I'm rushing on down, seven.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think you've hit by leave number eight, so now by leave number nine. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Village of Cleves and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of the sheriff's office for police protection services. The first year of this is a $266,047 revenue contract to the county. The, there's, I believe it's a three-year term, $266,318,000, then $376,000. This is the first community to approve a proposed district contract approach with some of our Western communities. We anticipate more of them coming on board early next year. So this is ultimately the first step in fulfilling what we have been trying to do out in the, some of our Western communities, and that is to move towards more of a district approach as opposed to a community by community that's just not as efficient as if we were patrolling in an entire district. So I want to thank Assistant Administrator Lisa Webb, who's been working on this with the sheriff in these communities. This is the first of these agreements, there will likely be more early next year. Happy to answer any questions, but do recommend approval.
Okay, open it up for questions.
I too want to thank Lisa Webb for doing this and Administrator Ludo. This is a forward progress with the folks out on the West Side, and I know there will be more to come, but I'm glad that we are able to convene and partner with those communities to make sure that they've got the police protection that they need at a reasonable expense. And so I will look forward to continued progress on this front, and so thanks for your work, Lisa.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumis?
Thank you. These glasses are not working well, because it looked like it said, "Deontay, $266,000."
He's really going to get happy.
Man, I said, wait a minute, so, yeah, but you're right, we've been working really hard to make this happen, so I thank all the staff for that.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve item number nine.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Unless I've missed something, I think that concludes the by leave items.
Yep, that does. Okay. Mr. Engineer. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'd like to wish everybody on the day a merry Christmas, since I probably won't see you again this year. So going through my items, item number one is a resolution to set public hearing dates for the construction project to make repairs to sidewalks and driveway aprons along various county roads. This year it is in Delhi and Green Townships. This is Project 502-401. We're requesting to set public hearing dates for January 18th at 1:15 and February 22nd at 1:15. These were for sidewalks that were inspected during this calendar year, and we will make improvements on them next year. Items two, three, and four are all similar. They are for our day-to-day operations of the engineer's office for work that we do internally. Number two is a resolution for the engineer to provide amenities for calendar year 2024 in accordance with Attorney General Opinion 82-006. This allows us to provide refreshments at the annual township meeting. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the county engineer to employ labor, purchase materials, and proceed by force account in maintenance, repair, construction, and reconstruction of roads and bridges. This is all, all this was in the budget, and it comes from the Road and Bridge Funds. Item number four is a resolution directing the county engineer to conduct an annual meeting of county and township officials and approving the necessary expenses for an annual township meeting. This shall not exceed $5,000, and it will come from the County Road and Bridge Fund. Item five through eight are all funding items dealing with the Western Hills Viaduct. I know there were some questions previously about whether it's funded and moving forward. It is, these items are all allowing us to move forward with the disbursement of funds for the project. Item number five is a joint agreement with the city for design improvements for the Western Hills Viaduct. This a lot, will allow us to pay the matching fund for OKI STBG grants that were awarded in 2020. That amount is, for the county engineers, $125,000 out of permissive auto. Number six is a resolution with the City of Cincinnati for the Western Hills Viaduct. This is a $1 million earmark we got from the Federal Highway Administration. The local match is $250,000. Our portion of that is $125,000, which will come out of permissive auto funds. Item number seven is a joint agreement with the City of Cincinnati, again for the Western Hills Viaduct. This is for OKI STBG grants that were awarded in 2021 in the amount of $1 million. A local match of $250,000 is required. The county's portion is $125,000, again out of permissive auto. Item number eight is a resolution for a joint agreement, again with the City of Cincinnati for the Western Hills Viaduct. This is the City of Cincinnati project, and has been applied for ODOT track grants in 2021 in the amount of $25 million. A local match of $6,250,000 is required for the grant, and the county's portion of that is $3,125,000, and that will be for, in fiscal year, ODOT's fiscal year 2025. Item number nine is a resolution approving the county engineer to fulfill the 2023 commitment to the townships. This is the annual allocation of 20% of the county's 70% portion of the license plate fee that we distribute to the townships. We have four projects, one in Anderson Township, their curb and sidewalk program, $57,760. Crosby Township, we have Fort Scott Boulevard repaving at $29,591. Delhi Township's 2023 street paving program at $36,350. And Green Township's 2023 street rehab program at $40,920. And these will all come out of the Hamilton County Permissive Auto Funds. And the final item, item number 10, is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Agreement for Prime AE Group for Professional Engineering Services for the improvements to the Riddle Road Bridge in the Village of Woodlawn. We are modifying that bridge to allow for multi-use path on one side, and this money will be reimbursed by the Hamilton County Transportation Improvement District with dollars that the Board of County Commissioners committed to it. The amendment amount is $38,300, and that will be reimbursed by the TID. That is all I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. You've got several items on here for the Western Hills Viaduct.
Yes.
Can you tell us, so the city is going to be the one doing it, or what is this going to?
This is part, we do have our design build team together now. We are working on that, so we're proceeding. We have building demolitions going on, we have utility relocations and costs associated with some work with the railroads. So this is starting to pay for the contractor, we have him on board, this is starting to pay some of his expenses. This allows us to go and use the grant money, and this is the local match to get those grants.
Okay, thank you. Open it up for questions. Vice President Dreehouse?
So Eric, related to the Western Hills Viaduct, what is our timeframe at this point?
We're still looking at construction, starting, next year will be mainly utility relocations because the Brighton Street substation needs to be relocated so that the high tension lines across the yards can be relocated before we can actually start any work. We're working on design with the contractor right now to modify the design so it's the most economical and we can get access. As has always been thought, the most difficult part of this job is going to be building over active railroad lines. So we have got the railroads involved, we're, we are meeting multiple times a week to work with them to try to get the, the design and the construction, constructability, so that it benefits us the most. So we're looking at construction, starting on utilities next year. Two years from now, we'll actually hopefully start putting some foundations in the ground and be completed by, I believe it's 2028, with the new structure. And then we'll have to demo, demo the existing one, which is going to be a major project in itself.
So you're building the one next to the other?
Correct.
So the other will be open during this time?
That's correct. The new structure will be on the south of the existing structure, with the existing structure being, remain open to traffic until the new one is opened up.
Okay, Godspeed, Eric.
It's, it's long progress, yes.
Commissioner Dumis?
Yeah, so item eight, Eric, there was
Yes.
a 50-50 match on, with the city and the county, they also paid the 3.1, right?
On number eight?
Yeah.
Right, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
That's all I had, yeah.
I make a motion to approve items one through 10.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays. See you next year. All right, next we got Mr. Ludo, who do we have?
Commissioners, item number 11 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Core Data for software services. Assistant Administrator Lisa Webb will walk you through this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll make this short and sweet for you. I will just state, prior to getting started, Megan Guthrie would be here otherwise, Office of Addiction Response. She is in DC, she's, she came back this afternoon for the, she and Captain Tom Fallon from the Heroin Task Force were presenting to the Congressional House Caucus on Addiction Treatment and Recovery about our efforts with the Heroin Task Force and the Quick Response Team. I've heard it went fabulously, so I can't wait to get more details, but that's where they are right now. What you have before you is a master agreement for Core Data. Core Data is the software that the Quick Response Team uses as they track individuals that they've identified and as they do follow-ups with them. What this agreement is going to be doing is expanding that data tracking to include the drug court, the, excuse me, they're already in the drug court and Quick Response, Quick Response Team. We're going to be adding Public Health to that, our care pods for tracking, and also Addiction Services Council with another contract within Public Health for additional tracking. So linkages in the system will all be through that same Core Data software, and we'll actually be able to start tracking individuals as they flow through different places and find better intercepts, and hopefully identify and get people the treatment that they need. So that's what's before you right now. It's $125,000 in total for the licensing agreements for each of those groups.
Okay, I'll open it up for questions. Vice President Dreehouse?
I'm, I'm excited to see this in front of us to expand the, the tracking, as we try to, as you say, identify people, find them, and get them into treatment.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing.
I'll make a motion to approve item 11.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Okay, consent agenda.
Consent agenda, Commissioners, there's, I think, like 54 items on the consent agenda. I'm happy to
Why don't we, well, we like to, people like to hear from me.
No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, 54 items on the agenda.
What vote did I miss?
Item number 11. $125,000.
Okay, let's do it over.
You want to do it over?
Yes. Could I? I'm sorry.
It's the holiday season. Let's do, I make a motion to approve item number 11.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Thank you, yes.
We got a consent agenda of 50 plus items.
I'm happy to go through, maybe just like leave out the credit cards and things like that, if you'd like, or?
Well, what I'll do on this one, I'll open it up if there's something that the Commissioner want to highlight in here, okay? Vice President Dreehouse, anything in here you want to highlight?
I'm piling through. So the one, item 27 is the organics processing feasibility study. This one is a result of the solid waste plan that was approved by this commission in 48 of the 49 counties, or, I'm sorry, jurisdictions in Hamilton County. So this will allow us to get some understanding of whether or not we should be removing organics or how we remove organics from the landfill, and so I'm pretty excited that that is moving forward. Hold on, let me, I'm paging through, I'm on item, page nine, hold on one second. I think that's all I have.
Sorry, you have? Okay. Commissioner Dumis?
I didn't have anything.
You didn't have anything? I had some, no, item number twenty-one, it is the Second Amendment to the Parking Management Agreement. I'm not against it, but I do want to make sure we are trying to diversify these parking garages. And more importantly, we had asked, I know I had asked for some of those other garages when the term is up, not necessarily for this company, but, you know, we have these agreements with Heritage and Mimi and so many others that was presented to us. I like to see those and see, you know, I don't want those to just go forever. I'd like to see when those are up, or they need to start becoming up.
Commissioner, so I think as an outcome of one of our prior items, we have on the list to get to you, to the entire board, the architectural partners on, on the banks and the riverfront and
Yeah.
terms of contracts, et cetera, we can include this on that and just get the, put the parking contracts on there as well.
Okay, no worries. That's all that I, I think that's all I have. On here, where it has chivviet, they basically just looking for more time with their grant. Is that what we're looking at? That's why it's zero dollars?
Yeah, that is a community revitalization grant, and yeah, they're just moving the timeline from November thirtieth of twenty-three to May thirtieth of twenty-four.
Okay, all right, well, I will.
Madam, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Commissioner.
Well, you mentioned about the parking situation, and we had asked about putting a logo so people would know that it was a Hamilton County parking area. When people raise prices, they don't know, they all know it's not us doing it.
I will follow up on that.
Okay, thanks.
If I could, just, I'm not sure which item it is. Oh, it's actually right in front of me. Item number seventeen, I just want to highlight, this is the extension of the agreement with our MSD monitoring team, who does a lot of really good work for the board behind the scenes in making sure, and working cooperatively with MSD to, given the joint management structure we have, where the county owns the sewer district, the city operates it, the monitoring team is very much like the county's owner's rep over there, making sure that board policy is carried through, that if there's budgetary issues, they're flagged, et cetera. I know Joe Graff from Plant Moran is, is here today, so I just wanted to highlight him in the, in the audience and thank him for his work. And with all the consent decree items that we have coming before us next year, there will be a lot more of it to come. So I just wanted to point, point Joe out since he has stuck it out through the meeting here.
Yes, Joe, thank you. Wave your hand so they can get you. Okay, I will make a motion to approve items fifteen through sixty-eight.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Any other things?
No, happy holidays, everyone. We've passed a budget, so it's all good news.
Yes. Commissioner Dumas?
Been cruising through the rest of the year.
And, and what's the other one?
Wonza, Hanukkah.
Hanukkah, yeah.
And Christmas.
And Christmas.
There you go.
And New Years. Be safe.
Commissioner, I apologize. Assistant Prosecutor Anis has informed me that he thinks you may have approved the consent agenda starting at item fifteen. It actually starts at twelve.
Okay, and we're gonna do it again. Items twelve through sixty-eight.
I'll second again.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
See, I told them, you are not sleeping these days. You're on top of it. You're on top of it. Thank you very much, everybody. Hug your friends and families. Before I leave, I just want to say, we'll see you next year, okay? I'll make a motion. I was getting ready to make a motion. You didn't let me do my Mickey Mouse thing. M I C, see you real soon. K Y, why? Because we love you. Now, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
See you in twenty-twenty-four.